I'd like to call the Fall River School Committee June 14th meeting to order. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agnew?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Harp?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to be acknowledged and permissible. Just a reminder, anybody that didn't sign up for Citizens Input that wants to, I have the sheet right here. You can come up before we get into it, but the first person up tonight, Keith Michon, we need a waiver on him. He's from East Providence.
Motion relieved.
Motion relieved, second.
Roll call. Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Go ahead, Keith.
Good evening. Last month Rebecca Q-6 shared her final remarks to the school committee as FRE president, and tonight I'm here to introduce myself to the committee as FRE president-elect. I appreciate you waiving the residency requirement to speak tonight and my knowledge, always making that exception for educators to speak. Thank you. My name is Keith Michon, and I'm honored and excited to be stepping into this role for next year. I began my teaching career in Fall River 12 years ago. I've worked here at CUS as an eighth grade math teacher, a sixth grade math teacher, and a computer science teacher. I've also been very active outside the classroom as an athletic coach and committee member at this local, the school, state level. Through these experiences, I've had the opportunity to see the power of collaboration. Joint labor management collaboration is not always part of the culture of a school district, but in Fall River, in recent years, it has been. I'm committed to continuing and improving that practice here in Fall River. Last month Rebecca shared that she was hopeful that we would reach an agreement before the end of the school year that will honor our work that we do, address inequities that exist in Fall River, between Fall River and neighboring communities. We've had many productive conversations, and I'm still hopeful that we can make that agreement. This has been an extraordinarily challenging year, and I know that many people are reflecting on this past year and they're thinking about what they want for the future. As I reflect, I'm reminded of the great work that we have done here. I'm proud how together we have created opportunities for students that I'm sure many people doubted was possible. Despite all the challenges, we continue to build relationships with the community, our curriculum continues to evolve, and we continue to create opportunities for students that are second to none. In the next couple of weeks, I'll be sharing my contact information with you. I look forward to working with you in the future, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up Brenna Souza, Kenyon Street, Fall River.
Hi, everyone. Wow, this is a little scary. Good evening, Mayor Coogan and members of the school committee. My name is Brenna Souza, and I live at 351 Kenyon Street, Fall River, Mass. I am here tonight as a citizen of Fall River, but I have worked at the Resiliency Preparatory Academy for the last six years. What I can tell you about RPA is there is no greater or more rewarding place to work. I have the honor of working with some of the most caring and compassionate individuals in this district. From teachers to custodial staff, we have the best of the best serving our students every single day. I had the opportunity to memorialize one of the best at his funeral service, and I'm proud to have the opportunity to speak with all of you today about him, that man being Bob Maderas. I was lucky enough to know Bob growing up as a close family friend and later on in life becoming his coworker. Bob was one of a kind. Every morning you could find Bob outside of our building on Rock Street, sweeping the sidewalk and greeting every staff member as they were making their way into work. He had a way of starting your day off right and putting a smile on your face. Bob was always asking the staff what we needed from him or what he could do to make our job just a little bit easier. The students we serve at RPA at times are perceived as troubled, but Bob never saw our students that way. He always pointed out the good he saw in them and made it his mission to make some type of connection with each student he spoke to. The students at RPA respected Mr. Bob. Mr. Bob was dedicated to this building and always went above and beyond. Being housed in an older building made it sometimes difficult to maintain, but that never stopped Bob. He took care of this building and the grounds like they were his own. I went around the building and asked the staff who knew Bob to tell me one word they felt described him best, and here are just some of those responses. Incredible, sweet, charismatic, funny, hardworking, loyal, accessible, genuine, and most importantly, a friend. As you can see, Bob was a well-respected man and an unbelievable coworker. He was committed to this building and to his job and to this district for 38 years. We at RPA were all lucky to have known him and to have worked with him. I think there would be nothing greater than to have our building renamed in Bob's memory. This would be such an exceptional way to honor and remember Bob's memory and to thank him for his service and dedication to all of us. It would also be an incredible way to convey to the students at RPA and throughout this district that you don't need a big job and lots of money to prove you made a difference, that you matter, and that you should be recognized for that. This would be an example for our students in Fall River that your greatness is not defined by money or titles. To be great and to be recognized for that, all you need is an extraordinary work ethic, a lifelong dedication to service, and to be a good and upstanding citizen of Fall River, just as Bob Maderas was. If I know Bob, I know he's smiling right now, knowing how highly his coworkers thought of him and how his hard work and commitment to all of us will never go unnoticed. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up Karen Maderas, London Street, Fall River.
That's certainly quite a speech that I have to come behind. My name is Karen Maderas, 411 London Street, Fall River, Mass. Good evening, everyone. I am Bob Maderas's sister, and I will be speaking to you today on behalf of my family. Mr. Bob, as he was referred to by the students, graduated from BMC Durfee High School in 1978. Upon his graduation, he enlisted in the U.S. Navy, serving six years with an honorable discharge, along with numerous letters of accommodation. After his military service, he came home in 1984 and began his employment as a building custodian with the city of Fall River, then the Fall River School Department. He loved his family, his work family, his job, and dedicated his life to all three. As always, he demonstrated kindness to students. One example that sticks out was on a very stormy rainy day, one of the students at RPA was worried about getting in trouble at home if he got his new white sneakers dirty. Being the concerned and kind-hearted person Mr. Bob was, he wrapped in tape the student's sneakers with plastic bags so the student wouldn't have to deal with any ramifications on the home front. He had a way with the students as he truly cared about them, and they in turn had a great deal of respect for him. He had an extremely strong work ethic and took great pride in the impeccable appearance of his school's interior and exterior. He was so proud of his work and was always excited over summer break when he would get the school in tiptop shape for when the staff and students returned in September. He was excited with any new cleaning equipment that would enhance the appearance of his building. He would always go above and beyond to help anyone he could with assisting from school events to community-based events. Whether you were a coworker, supervisor, staff member, parent, or student, he treated everyone with the utmost respect from every walk of life. He took great pride in his 35-plus years unblemished work record, along with his work attendance and sick leave record. Sadly, he needed to use the leave when he got sick. When diagnosed with stage IV lung cancer in November of 2019, he had a grim prognosis, but all he wanted to do was work each day and live out his life as normal as possible. He did exactly that until the pandemic stole that from him in February of 2020, when he was ordered by his oncologist to take a medical leave due to his condition and the contagiousness of COVID-19. Not being able to work and be around those he loved made for a rapid decline in his health, passing away on June 30th, 2020. Although unable to work but still very conscientious of his job, he would keep in touch with his coworkers on the daily operations at the school department. As I come before you this evening, asking for a favorable outcome with your vote to rename RPA, this vote is not just in vain. Your vote here tonight will be unprecedented, as it would be a vote not only recognizing my brother Bob, who wasn't a political figure and never walked the halls of a school that was named after him, but instead in recognition of Bob's blue-collar Union Brothers and Sisters, past, present, and future. The time is now to start recognizing the unsung heroes, our school custodial and maintenance, who strive day in and day out to keep the public school buildings clean and safe for all students and staff members. Without the custodial and maintenance staff, the school buildings would not be able to function. They are the backbone of the operation. I thank you for the opportunity to come before you and touch upon my brother's entire adult life as a public servant and his dedication to the betterment of the Fall River School Department. On behalf of my family, I thank you for your time and I ask for your consideration with a vote to have the Fall River Resilient Preparatory Academy dedicated in my brother's name and memory. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up Andrea Souza, North Main Street.
Good evening, members of the Fall River School Committee. My name is Andrea Souza, and I live at 3960 North Main Street in Fall River. I too am a longtime family friend of Mr. Bob Maderas. We met through his sister Karen, who became great friends of my parents back in the 90s, and I am honored to speak tonight on his behalf and his family's. Bob was a kind, hardworking, and dedicated man. He spent many years of his life working for Fall River Public Schools and truly enjoyed the work he did there. I can remember feeling comfort when seeing his friendly face in the halls of Spencer Warden when I was a student there. I also recall driving to my first day of work at the Fall River Courthouse and seeing Mr. Bob outside landscaping the grounds at RPA. I stopped and beeped, and he greeted me with the same friendly face and said, "You're going to be a great kid." You see, Bob did not realize what a difference he made in the lives of others. He was always the first one to help and always the last one to sit down, a true and humble man. This honor would be one that he and his family would be extremely proud of, to know that the footprint that Bob left on this earth did not go unnoticed. The criteria to have a building named after you in Fall River is vague, and it does not require you to be a politician, a businessman or woman, or to come from a family of high socioeconomic status. There is no extraordinary circumstances that would make a person more qualified for this honor than another. However, in the city of Fall River, there is quite a theme when naming schools. To name a few, Carlton Rivera's Elementary School was named after the longest-serving mayor in the city of Fall River. Mary Alfonska Elementary School was named after the first woman to hold a leadership position in the state senate. Edmund P. Talbot Middle School was named after the Fall River mayor who also served as the Bristol County Sheriff. BMC Durfee High School was named after Bradford Matthew Challoner, Durfee, who died at the age of 29 due to illness. He left a portion of his inheritance to the city of Fall River, and his mother advocated for the school to be named in his honor. These accomplishments mentioned above should be honored, but so should Mr. Bob's. By voting to name RPA after a man who was one of the longest-standing custodians for the city of Fall River, who was a member of the United States Navy, who treated everyone with dignity and respect, who made a difference in the lives of those he met, you are doing so much more than honoring a man who is no longer here. You are teaching the future generations of Fall River that no matter the position they hold, no matter the money they have, and no matter who they know, they can be honored in an exceptional way. For those who love and remember Bob's memory today and always, we ask you to vote yes when renaming the Resiliency Preparatory Academy, and we ask that you continue to be inclusive of all professions, roles, and individuals when honoring people in such a profound way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Next up Natalie Mello, Northeastern Avenue.
My name is Natalie Mello, 510 Northeastern Avenue. Just listening to them, I wrote some notes quickly. I had no intention to come up and speak, but just listening to every single one of them came up here and talk about Mr. Bob, I think all of you should really listen to what they have said. I think of Mr. Bob, I think of the word "respect." That was Mr. Bob, "respect." He respected high, low, medium, whatever. That man would do anything for anybody, no matter who you are, what you was, no matter what. That man did everything he could for anybody. If I could today go get a grave to be here with us, I would. That's how much of a special man he is, was. So I'm not going to say no more, because what they had to say said it all. It'd be a shame if that school was not named after him. Sorry, but I get emotional because I know what kind of man he was. Thank you. Please vote for beautiful Bob with respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Appreciate the comments. Next item up on the agenda, recognition awards. Mr. Agnew?
So it's a little awkward in here, but we're going to try to start, if the committee can stand up where Attorney Assad is, along the back, so that the video can actually take the individuals as they get called up. Fred TV folks have said that's the best way to handle it, so I'll read from Attorney Assad's desk, and if the persons, the people after they get called can come up and then head down to shake the hands of the school committee, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much, and I apologize for the tight quarters here, but first up we have a student that's going to be recognized. We do have a few other ones that we will try to do in July so that they can be present as well. But this is in recognition of receiving a gold medal for the T-shirt design national state champion for BMC Durfee High School at the 2021 Massachusetts Skills USA Competition. Congratulations to Aubrey Trahan, and there's also some certificates from Mayor Coogan and some others.
Congratulations.
We're also going to recognize some of the retirees from the current school year. We traditionally have been doing this each year around this time. Today, we're not going to read all of the names, we're only going to try to read the ones that are present here, and we'll try to get the other folks here in July as well. But we appreciate the years of service that all of these individuals have performed for the Fall River Public Schools. If anyone is not here after I read the couple of names, please let me know so we can read them as well. So for 18 years, we have Joanne Sullivan. For 32 years, Anne Marie Nicoletti. And for 34 years, Raymond Maderas. I apologize, we had a typo on the information here, but Joanne Sullivan was actually 38 years, so we were off by 20 years. Congrats. We have, for 34 years, Carol Goncelo. And I believe this is the last person that's here today. For 41 years, Paul Creashen. Once again, if we could get a round of applause for all of those individuals, and thank you for your service.
Number four Superintendent's Report. Dr. Malone?
I'm going to ask, if folks are going to leave, I ask that you stay for at least the next three minutes, because we're about to show you something special. I'm going to ask members of the committee if we could somehow, everyone could focus their attention on the monitor here, what we're about to see is what we've worked on for the last couple of years, establishing a vision for our athletic fields at Durfee. So what we're about to show you is a really cool technological, technologically enhanced vision of the potential for our fields.
Strike three called. Base hit and your game winner. Shot, good. Paul, width room. Paul taking it to the house.
Tonight, we wanted to start Superintendent's comments with something that we've been working on for the last couple of years, as we think about the new Durfee, as we get close to completing the construction, the next phases and what the field use will mean. You know, we've lost fields through the process, so how do we gain back fields and able to have two both Title IX equity, sports equity, field equity, and really create a 21st century facility for a Division I program such as the storied Durfee Athletic Program? Tonight on the agenda, later, we'll have discussion as to the next steps. But Ken has done a great job working with our team on creating the vision and the visuals, and we'll look forward to discussion tonight. But you can see the possibilities, and I get excited with this kind of thing, and you know, we've already approved the baseball fields, now we just got to keep going and get this done. So with that, stand by for more discussion. Speaking of the Durfee Construction Project, we're getting near the very end. We have another two months to go before the new school will be ready to open. The roof is being completed as we speak. I was there Saturday doing some oversight, if you will, with Ken, looking at progress. And I can tell you that this, A, not only is it beautiful, but the scope of what the possibilities are for kids in classrooms and all of our programs, it really is going to be a bright shining beacon for this city, and it will be the best high school in Massachusetts, maybe New England. And I say that knowing that, you know, we're on the five-yard line, so we're going to be pushing hard for the next few months to get to opening, but we will get to opening, and I look forward to also more discussion on that topic on tonight's agenda. The last day for students is Thursday, the 17th. Tomorrow is the last full day of school for kids. We're going to have half-days for students on the last two days. Granted, this has been the hottest school year in the history of school years, but we've made it to the very end, and we wouldn't have done that if it wasn't for our teachers, custodians, support staff, parers, administrators, nurses, you name all the operational staff who have made this year possible, and that's who deserves the thanks. Of course, our parents and our students as well. But the last day for adults is the 21st, which is next week, the way the year ended, but students end this Thursday. As soon as we're done with, you know, with the school year in terms of what's happening with students, we're getting ready for reopening operations for the fall of '21. So we're moving right into the next phase, but I do want to thank everyone and also let everyone know about the last day being the 17th and the two days, two final days being half-days. Finally, the FY22 budget. Myself, Ken Pacico, Kevin Almeida presented to the city council last week. We answered the city council's questions. Our budget stays where it was approved by this committee in terms of what we've been requesting, which is what the House and the Senate have come to on 100% of net school spending. It's about $77,000 more than we requested, but that's good for us at 100%. The questions that were asked, we were able to answer them, and we're fully vetted and ready for the next phase of the process to have a budget completed by the end of June and implemented for July 1 fiscal year FY22. That ends the Superintendent's comments tonight. If anyone has any questions, I'll gladly answer them.
Kevin, I mean, Mr. Agnew, sorry.
Yeah, just, it's not really about this, but it's an opportunity to have dialogue with you between meetings, but is there any update on the Twitter information that I asked you for? So I asked you for information related to Twitter on two occasions.
Kevin, that's out of order right now. Let's finish with it and go to the meeting.
Yeah, he's done. So we had to ask if we had any questions, and I have a question for him.
On the Superintendent's report.
Yeah, and you're the Superintendent, right? So I'm asking you a question if there's any follow-up from the request that I made, yes or no?
Let's go to the next item, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia, that's gonna be out of order. We're trying to stay on the agenda tonight, please. We'll get to it under new business if you want later.
Bottom line is, is that we have an agenda, it says superintendent's report. When, and a committee member asks for information between meetings, the superintendent should either give that information, give a response to the individual school committee members, or face the question at a meeting. That's why I'm asking the question now, because I've asked several times now for information related to the school department Twitter page, and I've asked for the copies of any personal messages that were sent via such. That's all I want.
Yes.
I've asked it twice, and I haven't gotten an answer. So when is it that a committee member will get an answer?
Dr. Malone, when can you have that for him?
Probably some time in the foreseeable future.
Well, that doesn't really let him nail down something.
That's the answer.
Okay.
So I'll just take it as, no, we're not gonna get it. But it's definitely a right of the committee to get that type of information, so I, I do think that somebody needs to step in, because obviously, he just doesn't wanna give us some basic information as such. I've asked for it at a meeting very nicely, and it's, it's not really that complicated.
Well, we gotta, thank you.
So I'd ask for your support on that, Mr. Chairman, moving forward to try to get us the information we request.
Offline, we'll talk.
Thank you.
Next item up is a student comment report. We do not have one tonight. I'm gonna ask for item number six, approval of minutes.
Motion to approve minutes?
Second.
Let's go with the first one, 38 first, for the regular school committee meeting. I have a motion to second, and then Deb, you wanna call the roll, please?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Kugan?
Yes. Next one is 315, a special meeting of the Fall River School Committee. Could I get a motion to second, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Kugan?
Yes. Item number seven is a request for travel. We have none tonight. Item number eight is acceptance of donations.
Motion to accept donations. Second.
I have a motion to second. Superintendent Malone, could you please read the donations?
Sure. From Project Lead the Way to Talbot Middle School, $300. From Project Lead the Way to Morton Middle School, $300. From Project Lead the Way to Leterno Elementary School, $250. From Project Lead the Way to DURF High School, $200. From Donors Choose to Talbot Middle School, $169. From Pell Industries to DURF High School, $50.47. And from Ohio Ply Prints Incorporated to DURF High School, $29.67. We thank our philanthropic support.
Thank you, superintendent. Number, item number nine.
I need a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. Roll call, please, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Kugan?
Yes. Item number nine is an approval of contracts. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Anybody want any to put a hold on? Just give them to me now, Mr. Agia.
Not necessarily hold, I just had a question. And it says, new phone system? E+, it's on like, second page of the...
Who's gonna tell us about the new phone system? Okay, thank you, Mr. Pacheco.
So, Mr. Agia, the system, this system is gonna be part of a system, the VoIP system that we've been putting in in most of our schools, and this is an additional system that we're adding on portions of Talbot Green and the new DURF.
So it's not like doing something different? It's not a new phone system?
It's, it's just continuation, it's continuation of the upgrades that we've been doing at all our schools.
So it's not new for the whole district, it's only additional?
No, yes.
Yeah, when I read it, it said new system, and I was thinking, why are we...
Yeah, no, it's just an addition. It's new. It's a new system for a bunch of us schools who have not caught up yet, yes.
And was that part of the DURF project at any point?
Uh, it's not, no.
It was never slated for a part of it?
No, because it was gonna be part of, originally it was gonna be part of E-Rate, and then we used E-Rate money for something else at the DURF project, so this was always gonna be an outside piece.
Thank you, Ayil.
Mr. Corey?
Okay, thank you. First thing I wanna highlight is, I'm, I'm really pleased with the nature of the contracts. There's a lot of contracts that are addressing a lot of the concerns that this committee has shared over the past year, especially in ways to social emotional learning. I'm very pleased that we're reaching out to youth court and, and educational outreach programs through the CAC and mentoring programs. It's all very, very healthy for the fall of the public schools. My question was in regards to the Smiles program, which I absolutely love and would always advocate for. I just wanna know, can anybody tell me, was Smiles dormant in the past school year with the pandemic, or has it been actively still engaging? And what might be just a, a rough empirical view on the Smiles program? Is it growing? How does, how is it affecting our kids?
So it was dormant this past year, but the goal is, in speaking with people, like, is that we reconfigure and move forward as we're able to do this coming year.
Yeah, so it was fairly dormant, but now it's gonna kick in again, right?
It was fully dormant, yeah.
Yeah. I hope we don't have any trouble or hiccups in trying to get it going. It's, it's a real important program. It's a, it's real positive role model mentoring, and I'd like to see it be really strong this year. Thanks, Ayil, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Larevy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question on the Katie Brown program. Who is this, like, how is it implemented in our district? What grade level, what schools, what students? Just some information on the KBEP, please.
Sure, I'll let Assistant Superintendent Poons answer the specifics.
Just gotta follow up on some of, because we're discussing the health curriculum later, so I have some questions on that.
Hi. They, they come into the middle schools, to middle grades.
Okay. How, how often are they, is it every child, every student in each school that takes part in the, cuz I know when they do it in the community, it's an eight-week program, so it's an eight-hour program.
It's elementary in middle schools, plus high schools. It's K-12, but doesn't start till third.
It depends on the school. They arrange how they're going to come, so some of them, they do consolidated, depending on their schedule, and other times, it's once a week for a number of weeks.
Okay, but, so what you're saying is everybody, third grade through middle school?
There's an elementary component, a middle school, and a high school.
And every student is getting the Katie Brown program?
Yes, it's push-in.
They have the option to get it.
No, you say option, it was option through the parent. So a parent sign off, yes, no, because of the healthy relationship aspect of it and the violence. Would you say a majority of the students?
Absolutely.
Are going through the Katie Brown program?
Yes.
Okay, and schools are doing great with it, it's, it's, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ayil?
Anything further?
I just, I just wanna get some more clarity, maybe I heard it wrong, but this, the question that I asked about the phones was never part of the DURF project to begin with at all? Did I, I don't know if I got that wrong, or was...
So the DURF, the, the, the technology in the building is owned by DURF. Some of those particular items, like the phones that we're using, was not part of the project because it was gonna be done through E-Rate. We chose to use the E-Rate money at DURF for other things that we felt were more important, and the phone system was a cheaper option for us to do it this way.
So at some point, E-Rate paid for phone systems?
E-Rate, E-Rate's paid for, for the, for the backside and for systems, yes.
And the reason why I just ask is, I know we got other line items as well. I'm concerned about the DURF project being over budget, and then how do, how are we supplementing it, or whatever? So that's why I'm asking the clarifying question.
Sure, I understand.
That it's, if it was there and it was different, then I'd just like to at least know it.
Yeah, it's, it didn't come out. It was, it was never in there for a reason, which was the E-Rate.
Thank you, Ayil.
Anything further? Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
I'm staying.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Kugan?
Yes. Number 10 is an approval of grants.
Sold.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion on the grants? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Kugan?
Yes. Committee of the whole, I'd like to get a motion, if we could, because of the people that are here tonight, to move 11.8 to the top.
So moved. Sold, second.
Second, any discussion on moving it up? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Kugan?
Yeah, yes. 11.8 is a discussion and vote to approve the renaming of the Resiliency Prep Academy as referred to by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee presented by Ken Pacheco.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion to second, any discussion on the item? Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The 290 Rock Street, Fall River Technical High School is its current name, and for 15 years, I've sat across committees and council. And I have to tell you that there is no more important work for me to do than, than this. There's been a lot of items, countless hours, and a lot of butt-kicking in all of that time, in those 15 years, but this is extremely important and sweet for me, for Bob, who cannot be measured like we measure everyone. As many people said, Bob is different, and he cares. A lot of people go to work, they push, punch the clock, they leave, blue collar. I say to myself all the time that where I started as blue collar, I'm going to end up as blue collar. I believe that Bob exemplifies what it means to reach a point in your life that nobody else matters and everybody matters. And he thought that the students at RPA and everywhere else he was in his time here and on the city, that people deserved to be treated with respect. And I was glad that Bob worked with me, along with a whole ton of people, about 450 to be exact, in both the city side and on this side, and it's my honor to work with, with blue collar people who give so much to what they do, and most of the time unrecognized for anything. You shouldn't have to be royalty, nor should you have to be elected, nor should you have to have a boatload of money or know somebody to have something nice done for you and in your honor. And 290 Rock Street will be much better served, along with all of us, if this building is named after Mohamed Maderas.
Any discussion? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, so I have a couple of things to say on this. I really take this vote seriously. I take my job seriously on the school committee. And when this first got presented, you know, I feel like I was a real good friend of Bob's. I worked with Bob for several years at RPA. We had a lot of fun together. Everything the speakers mentioned earlier, I don't disagree with at all. I think they were on point with what they said related to the type of person he is and his character and all of those things. But when we, as a school committee, look at naming buildings, schools, whatever, in Fall River, I think that we, we can't take this lightly. So I don't wanna have a run-on, so I'm gonna read my statement. This has no reflection negatively on Mr. Bob or his family. It just has to do with doing what I feel is the right thing as a school committee member, to not set precedent for the future. So the naming of a school building in Fall River is something that should not be taken lightly. The school committee needs to be cognizant of not setting precedent when naming school buildings or schools. There are limited buildings in Fall River, and it is my belief that they should be named in only extraordinary situations due to that limitation. The school committee has an agenda tonight, and I believe it says to rename the Resiliency Prep Academy. I think actually what's before us is the building, as Mr. Pacheco had said, not necessarily the renaming of the school itself. It's my belief that this item should not be before us for a vote, cuz this is a very tough vote for us to take, at least for me, anyway, because I do take it serious and look at the precedent, having served on this committee for many years. Like I said, we worked together for several years at RPA. Bob was a great person, he came to work every day, and his loss was felt by many, including myself. Last year, the school committee passed a resolution to plant a tree in his memory outside the RPA. I believe this was an appropriate type of memorial, and I voted for it absolutely last year. I think that's what Bob would have wanted, is something very simple like that, like he was, where we could go memorialize him and remember him. But although Bob was a dear friend of mine, I get elected to take constant vote, consistent votes, to have sound rationale. And in this particular case, I think it's setting us up for the future, in that we have many, many people that come through the Fall River schools that make a difference. And now, what are we gonna do moving forward related to that? We have literally had hundreds of people pass away over the years that have made tremendous differences to the children in Fall River, none of which have a school named after them or a building. We have other community members that have done tremendous work across the city or the country, none of which have a school named after them or a building. So renaming something like a school or a building is something that should be scrutinized by this committee, involve some public input, and should not set a precedent that we cannot uphold into the future. So regardless of how this vote goes today, I do think that this committee needs to create a protocol, policy, so that we don't just get something placed on us and have to take a vote like we are today. So I'm not gonna be supporting this agenda item today, but it's not a reflection on my late friend, Bob Maderas. I don't believe that this is something that he would want, and I believe that there are more appropriate ways to memorialize both Bob and other individuals who have done similar work over the careers. When I had talked to Mr. Pacheco about this, we went over it a little bit, and Mr. Pacheco's comment to me was, similar to what he just said, it was in relation to, you know, what about something for the little guy, not just somebody who's a politician and raises all kinds of money and donates all kinds of money? What about one for the little guy? My comment back to him was, I totally agree with you to stick up for the little guy. What I'm having a hard time with in this situation is that the Fall River schools have a lot of little guys, and how do we differentiate between this particular case and others in the future? So I just want people to know I'm gonna be voting against this, but this has no reflection on Bob or his family, and with that, Ayil, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Costa?
So thank you, Mr. Pacheco, and I wanna also thank my colleagues on the Facilities Subcommittee, Mr. Hetzel at the chair, and Mr. Hart for first, having the discussion there and then referring it here for, for a broader discussion. I think there's a lot of people in the room who knew Mr. Maderas or Mr. Bob, and I won't even begin to try to articulate the sentiments that were expressed before this committee tonight by those who clearly hit the nail on the head tonight. Had the pleasure of knowing Bob and his family for just about 20 years, and there were some comments that I could agree with, like, Mr. Bob wouldn't have wanted this. You're right, he was a humble guy, he wouldn't have asked for it, but that doesn't mean that this committee can't take the action to honor him in doing it. Bob was one of those guys that would do things, not necessarily for the recognition, but he certainly didn't shy away from recognition after the fact, and he was very proud of the work he did. And that's why this vote is a very easy one for me. I, again, Fall River's a textile community, you know, get up and roll up your sleeves and do your work kind of community. Blue collar is, is members have, or individuals have said tonight, and I agree that I think it's about time that this community start recognizing those individuals, because they weren't not only the backbone of this community going back generations, but... Because they're not only the backbone of this community going back generations, but they're still the backbone of this community. And, you know, I, in terms of precedence, you know, in 16 years, I voted on one other naming, actually two other namings of schools, both the Fonsica and the Viveris. Both former long-time civil servants to not only the community in Fall River, but also at the state level. And I actually think, Mr. Agia, I may have been on the committee at that time. And so my recollection then, and I stand to be corrected, is that Mr. Agia supported the naming of those schools for those two individuals without regard for whether or not it set precedence going forward. And so I don't see this as setting precedence. I see it as recognizing an individual who clearly, we talk about the first for a number of schools. This will be the first time a building's been named after the longest-serving civil service employee, custodial employee, and I wish he wasn't gone. I wish he was still here because Mr. Bob would still be sweeping the curbside in front of the Resiliency Prepatory School. I saw him there many times, took great pride in his work, but the reality is he's not. He's not here, and I can't think of a better way to keep his memory alive, not only for his family, but also for this community, which he served. After serving his country, mind you, Mr. Bob was about service, and I think it sets the bar really high for those students in that school that regardless of what they decide to do when they leave the Resiliency Prepatory School, that they can be somebody that's that important that its community recognizes them. And so I'm going to ask my colleagues for their support tonight, and with that, I yield.
Anything further, Tom? I mean, Mr. Corey?
I just want to add that I think it reflects very well on this committee that there's such a recognition in the agenda tonight. There's one word that I know that describes this recognition. It's called humanism, and this is recognizing humanism at the base level, and I couldn't agree with it more. Thank you. I yield.
Okay.
Just a real quick. Mr. Hart? At the, at the, at the last, the Subcommittee meeting, I know, I think it was Mr. Costa asked the question, and Ken, I don't know if you did follow up, was the building named after anybody?
May I, Mr. Chairman? So the request did go from the Facilities to the City Planner, Mr. Kenny's office, and they did the research on it. One of the concerns was whether or not we were placing another individual's name on that building, and that's not the case. The only recorded name of that building is the Fall River Vocational High School. That's the only record, so it wouldn't be that.
I just assumed if it didn't come up, then nothing was, nothing came.
Yeah, it was. It was vetted prior to tonight's meeting. I think Ms. Maderis did put the document, although it's further down.
Oh, okay.
It's further down in all that paperwork there.
All right. No, I yield. Thank you.
Okay, Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make sure that the the vote reflects the naming of, that would be the Robert L. Maderis Resiliency Prepatory Academy?
So noted. Mr. Agia?
So, Mr. Pacheco, in his, I had mentioned before that that was a little, I was, when I talked to Mr. Pacheco, he talked about the building, not renaming the school. And it says attached here with, for your information, the renaming of the Fall River Technical High School building at Rock Street to the Robert L. Maderis building. That's what's before us.
Well, that was Mr. Pacheco's recommendation, but the motion that's on the floor that's been made is the Robert L. Maderis Resiliency Prepatory Academy. And if that wasn't what was captured in the motion, I'll amend the motion as such. And I don't know if that'll need a second, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. I'm going to call the roll on that. Mr. Agia?
Yeah, just, I don't want to go back and forth on this. I made my statement, but the the naming of a school is even more important that we have a process. In this particular case, Mr. Pacheco, when I talked to him, was related to the building. Was the principal of the school, the current RPA, involved in this at all? Is he aware of it at all?
Can I?
I did not talk to, I did not talk to.
The answer's no.
To Bob, to Rob.
The answer's no.
Okay.
So it just, when we talk about precedent, when we talk about why I suggested that I wasn't going to vote for this, this is sort of the reason, is that we're going to rename a school, and the principal of the school who's been there for several years isn't even part of the process. So this process was not the best process. With that, I don't want to go back and forth. My comments before related to Mr. Bob, my respect for him, I'm not going to keep going back and forth to debate it, out of respect from Mr. Maderis. I yield.
Yep. Deb, please call the roll, and please read, read exactly what the vote is.
Well, it was amended by Mr. Costa to name the school the Robert L. Maderis Resiliency Prepatory Academy.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mary Kugan?
Yes. Next item up on the agenda? Okay. 11.1 is a present, a presentation and discussion of an attendance report by Maria Ponce and Dr. Tracy Curley. Dr. Ponce?
Good evening. What, Dr. Malone shared with you the attendance report that was a result of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education releasing the chronic absenteeism rate from September till March. As a result of that data, obviously Fall River fell in the lowest 5% of schools. And as a result of that data release, we gathered together as school-based teams. We tasked every school-based team to dig into their data, disaggregate it by subgroup, look at for potential root causes. We gathered, then we gathered as a principal group, came back, shared some of the practices that were in place at each school, some practices that we needed to put in place. The data, the report shows that the data is actually pretty consistent. Certainly, we know that this year was an abnormal year. And typically, we struggle with our attendance data, and this year just kind of, it was a glaring piece of data that showed us that our, we, our kids struggled to come to school. So as a result, Dr. Taylor has met with the attendance officers multiple times. We have met as a principal group. Every principal has identified together, we collectively identified some non-negotiables moving into next year. And they range from home visits to student success plans, to the attendance officers creating, prioritizing and making home visits along with school adjustment counselors, school-based staff. And our, so that we have, and every school will, as well as the district, will have a school-based, a school improvement goal of attendance to increase daily attendance and decrease chronic absenteeism. We're going to be doing that at the school level as well as at the district level. Dr. Curley's here. She went through the data. Dr. Taylor certainly can come to the table. Dr. B is here too, and Matt Damaris is here. Certainly, from a principal perspective, you can ask questions in regards to what is happening at the school level, as well as what, you know, where do we go from here? Do you want, your folks want to join us?
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Ponce or Dr. Curley? Attendance hasn't just been an issue for Fall River Public Schools this year during a pandemic. We can all agree. I see heads nodding. I think most of us would agree with that. Obviously, I think that certainly put more stress on attendance. There may have been some confusion about the expectations around actually coming into school or when they were home remote, what the process was. There could have been connection issues, so on and so forth. But I think what, for me, is that this has been sort of a reoccurring issue, and I know we tried to resolve it. Although I never really understood the empty chair sort of theme, I guess, that went on. Because I don't think it ever really addressed it. It was more of a passive way of saying, no one's in that chair, but it really didn't speak to the importance of student being in that chair. And so I'm glad this process has begun because I really think that there was some sobering information shared with us statewide. The first thing that came to my mind is why are we struggling so much here in the city and why are like districts that we often compare ourselves to not in the same position? And so what came to mind was, was it reporting? Was it the way they reported, you know, in comparison to the way we report absences? Or are there other barriers? And I know that the committee administration has dealt with, you know, some of the transportation issues with bus passes. And I know for a long time, taking a bus from the south end to the terminal and then switching off and jumping on another bus causes, particularly when you're going to do that an hour earlier than most of your classmates because they only live a short distance, or maybe they only have to take one bus to get where they need to. So we have taken steps, but more recently, the parent engagement specialists, with people going out to the homes, trying to break down some barriers. I know there were principals that themselves have gone, Ms. Ponce, when you were principal at Doran, and I know Dr. B, and some of your other colleagues physically have gone to homes to say, what's going on? Why isn't your son or daughter coming to school? And I think we all can agree that we can't educate them if they're not there. So I guess what I'm looking for is what are some of the tangible recommendations or suggestions that you all can make that we can wrap our arms around and sort of instead of the empty chair, start to embrace a new way of sort of thinking about how we get our students in our classrooms? And so I've thought about, I mean, I don't know, is it more attendance offices? I know at one time we used to have four at the high school. Now we have two. Which, you know, just recently, Dr. Taylor, I was at a meeting, and one of the attendance officers shared some sobering information regarding their caseloads and the ratio. We talked about for SACS, you know, what ratio is the ratio we can all live with? And for some of our attendance offices, they got hundreds of students that they're responsible for keeping tabs on and making sure that they're in school. And so I can't think of any better time than now. Quite frankly, I, I, I'm a little embarrassed having been on this committee. And I, listen, I'm a big person. I can take the heat, and so if that's what needs to come my way, I'm willing to accept it. But as one member, I just feel like it's gone on long enough, and we need to figure out something tangible that we can get behind and work both the committee and the administration and our parents because they need to be part of this as well. And it's a complicated problem. It's not just a, and Dr. Curley, you can tell, you can tell the committee, it's not something, it's not a one-size-fits-all solution. We need to figure out what's going to work for Fall River. And I know there are other pieces into this, the court system and what happens when we make those CRAs and what happens with those, and how much attention do they get? And the failure to cause, and what's the maximum penalty? I think it's $25 fine to the family. So really, like, where's the teeth on that side when we finally have exhausted all of our resources and efforts school-wise, when we need other agencies to step in and assist? What is their, what's their teeth? What's their sort of ability to help us? And so I think it's, it's more than just Fall River. It's, it's a bigger issue, but I think we're charged. We're trying to figure out how we fix it. So I'll yield. I'm hopeful that we'll hear some, some tangible things that the administration can recommend to us. I know now that in the past, we always had to determine, you know, regarding what financial resources we had to do certain things. That's been a struggle, not just for attendance, for instruction, for capital improvements, you name it. I think we're in a better place now, so if that's part of it, then I'd like to hear those recommendations as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield.
Anything further, Mr. Corey?
I'll be brief, Mr. Chairman. I just want to let you know that pre-pandemic, I served very actively on the Attendance Task Force. And they were very productive meetings. It involved the, the whole community, especially clinicians who worked in the doctors' offices locally that changed their practice, that once a child had to leave school for a doctor's appointment, then the doctors would give them a note to maybe spend the rest of the day out of school. But the schools started to get serious, and the doctors started to understand that, you know, the schools are dealing with an attendance issue. So that's just one of the factors of the great communication we had with our greater community. The other thing that I, that was, that really struck me being on that task force was the attendance offices were all working extremely hard. Their caseloads were full, and they'd still be scratching their heads as to trying to reckon with a solution to this idiosyncratic problem that we have in Fall River. One of the positives that I see that grew out of all of the focused attention we gave attendance pre-pandemic was the growth of outreach. And I know that outreach is probably the wave of the future. I hope it is because we could keep our important people based in the schools, like SACS. Instead of the SACS having to leave all the time, there are always cases that need to be triaged in the course of a school day. So I think the growth of outreach is, is something that could be explored moving forward into the future. It's just a suggestion on my part, but I, I know that it can be very effective, especially, it's another way that our school department can reflect its cultural diversity because we'll need outreach in, in different languages to approach the demographic of the child who is not coming to school regularly. One of the other issues that became very, very aware to me is that the demographics of this issue are really something to see. When Ed reform kicked in in 1993, and this, this city took advantage of building all of these great new schools, we lost the concept of that smaller neighborhood school in which many of us, many of us older Fall Riverites grew up in, all the smaller neighborhood schools that you'd be able to walk to with no issue. However, now there are less schools, but they're all bigger, and with that comes other issues such as transportation and how do you get there on a regular basis? So it's a multi-pronged issue. I'm really glad to see that there's a focused attempt on your parts, you know, to try to figure this out, and let's continue to figure this out. With that, I yield, Mr. Chair.
Anything further, Mr. Costa?
Unless someone else has, I just want to, I found the email. So the individual handles Laterno, Sylvia, and RPA have 1,581 students. The individual who handles Durfee and Doran has 2,609 students. The attendance officer for Viveris, Lord, and Stone have 1,578 students. The attendance officer for Talbot, Fonsica, and Watson have 1,423. And then the individual for Martin, Tansey, and Spencer Board has 1,551. Individual for Cusson Green is 1,406. And then obviously, one of the attendance offices handles all the court stuff, is sort of like the liaison, if you will, so that each of the attendance offices aren't being tied up presenting their case to the juvenile court. Those reports get funneled to one who sort of serves as the liaison. So again, not all of them are probably attendance issues, but you can't discard them as, as not being attendance issue because you still have to track and pay attention to whether or not they're in school on a daily basis. So, you know, we talk about the ratios for other, you know, SACS and guidance and classroom sizes. You know, I think that's something the committee needs to look at at some point in determining, is that too much? And is there opportunity for individuals or students to slip through the cracks? Because the attendance offices are focusing on the chronic ones and not really preventing those who are heading to be chronic from becoming chronic. So with that, I yield.
I, I, oh, go ahead, Mr. I just want to do, do want to say one thing. I think that the attendance issues are going to be exaggerated next year. I think kids got into this pattern of staying home. I'm not going in. I worked with Matt and Tracy, and we'd be in the office chasing a student around, and you'd flip through X2, and the kid would hit us with 300 days. 300 days absent. And I would, I really wanted to say, this is going to be one heck of a struggle, because what are you going to do? The kid got himself into such a pattern of non-attendance, that when you try to flip him back to coming in every day, you're in a real, real struggle. And that happened far too often. I know Mr. Costa gave you the accurate statistics on the caseload, but the more you narrow those numbers down, the more you realize you're hitting a targeted group of kids that may have 20, 30, 40, 50, 60 days. And those are the focus. I agree with what Mr. Costa said about, you know, he used to talk about 1,500 kids, but probably you're getting that ball down to 100, maybe, maybe under. And that's what you got to work on, because those are the ones we have to get in. And I think next year, it's going to be daunting. I hope, I hope it flips around. But I, I think we have a lot of kids that have been damaged quite a bit by this pandemic. And I just hope we can get them back in school. And I do, you know, I did want to say that, but it was Mr. Aguirre next.
Yeah, just a couple of things. When I looked at this report, you know, nothing in here is new or surprising to me. But my, my question when I was reading it, and just looking at, we all know there's a problem. So take the current year out. I'm not talking about the current year with COVID. But when you look at all of the different things that are in place, I've been saying this for a long time, that we need to have systems in place that they need to be followed across every single school. And it's not just the attendance offices. It's the workers in the school, the school adjustment council, the principal. It's got to be everybody, all hands on deck, to try to address this. And when I look at some of the protocols, are we following, are all schools with fidelity following the protocols for attendance?
So I would say, Mr. Aguirre, that is part of the work that needs to be done. I agree with you. This is, I think we can take this year out, because this is an abnormal year. But if you look at our attendance data over the years, it's hovering around the same. We had made the last few years pre-COVID, we had made some significant progress, because we had put an emphasis on combating chronic absenteeism. I think there were some consistent practices in place. I think that there's a lack of consistency. I can't say, stand here and say, with fidelity, in every single school, everyone is following the same procedure and the same process, which is why we gathered everyone together, and we came up with processes that need to be in place at every single school. We need to be proactive. So we need to identify the students that are on the cusp of becoming chronic, putting student success plans in place, making sure that we have an all-hands-on-deck approach, connecting every single one of those students with an adult at the school that is tracking that student and giving them a reason to come to school, and making them recognize that if they're not in school, they're missing out on something. Those are systems that need to be in place in every single building with all of our students who are on the cusp of becoming chronically absent.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with anything you just said. The frustration, the frustrating part for me, though, is why that hasn't been happening, take the last year out. But administratively, it should not be an option for principals of any school to just not follow the directive of the administration. So when we create protocols, like I'm looking at the intervention, the attendance intervention protocol, day three unexcused day, daily attendance query, classroom teachers encouraged to make a call, letter from concern, sack, fourth day, similar, five, it articulates exactly what's happening. Now, if this type of thing is our protocol, and it's not being followed, then how can we make a judgment on whether these type of things are effective or not effective? There's other ones that go on to say, I think one of the recommendations was to run two reports, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. Hello? I mean, why, that wasn't happening?
Not consistently across the board.
How? That's my point, is how was that not happening? When we know, everybody here knows, oh, attendance is an issue, attendance is an issue. I agree with Mr. Costa. We started looking at the red chair like that was going to solve the problems. But administratively, to see that in here now, that was one that was just glaring to me, was that we don't run a second report to check the attendance. This committee has been proactive with the purchasing of vehicles, from what I understand. I keep asking these questions. How many students have been actually picked up this year by a vehicle that we authorized the purchase of to get kids when they're not in, get them back into the building? How many? I asked for that information in a public meeting 30 days ago.
I would say the answer is zero for this year, because they just got the vehicles and got it ready and met with the attendance officers to set a plan in place.
Yep. Once again, I think that's an administrative function that we dropped the ball on, quite frankly. We look at the CRAs, somebody mentioned the court system. The court system's not helping either. So we need to lobby the legislature to change some of their rules. It says in here, point blank, that a student can be absent 32 times without taking them to court. How ridiculous is that? What are we going to do when a parent fails to, you know, show up and you take a parent to court? What have they given us for tools to try to help them? That needs to, you know, to change. One of the things I think that we need to do, I've mentioned this for years, at the elementary level, we need to have alternative schools. We brought that up a couple of years ago. We tried it, and it didn't work out. But then, I haven't seen that on the table again. We need to be able to have options for kids that don't fit the traditional school to get them into other places. Meanwhile, there's certain schools that are busting their butt, and the numbers are reflecting it. But we really need to have consistency, you know, across all schools. Is, is there any need for a new policy? You know, before we get to September, is there a need for new policies related to attendance? I read through this, and I know we're going to try doing like these different things, and the non-negotiables and all that. But school committee policy, what we handle, are we comfortable that we have the policies in place, or do we need to address all attendance policies in July or August?
So we'll be bringing forward to the committee this summer, like we do every summer, our attendance policy. So if we have any changes to make, then we'll bring them forward to you. But that happens every year. We bring that forward probably in July.
So if none go, if we don't bring anything forward?
Well, we bring it forward anyway. But I'm telling you, if there are changes to be made, there'll be recommendations at that time. Each year, we bring forward attendance policy.
But we're going to have an attendance policy that everybody knows about?
Yes.
That is, parents.
We bring forward in July.
Yep. My last question, and maybe this is something that you can get copies of, or just, I read the attendance, this thing, the policy, the book. The back of the book, it shows parent signature, saying that, can we just get an update on how many of those were actually signed, not COVID year, prior years? Because it does articulate in here what is their responsibilities. And we just need to get, I think, talk real and talk tough a little bit. We can't just keep saying, let it be, let it be. There has to be an end game that was not going to happen. How many kids were held back because of attendance? How many kids were forced to go to summer school because of attendance? Probably the answers to most of those things are going to be no, no, no. But we, we're not going to change the attendance if we just keep getting, well, no, well, no, well, no. And I, obviously, that's a bigger issue of whether they keep kids back or not. But the point is, if they think that I can just not show up, and I'm going to be pushed forward, that's a bad idea to keep it into your head. You've got to have to know there's some pushback. You're going to go to court. Parents are going to go to court. So I'm all in favor of supports, but I don't think just adding four or five more attendance officers is going to do the trick. We need the systems to be in place, and we need to make sure that if somebody's not implementing that, then it comes from the superintendent on down, that they're going to get in trouble for not following the policies. With that, I yield. Thank you very much.
Mr. Corey?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I want to recognize your comments, Mr. Chair. I thought you were right on the mark in your comments, that next year is going to be a tough year. I also want to recognize that, I think that you're an expert on this issue, because you worked with it directly in your career. And I worked with it with you. And it was tough work. We, we were always on the lookout for that school child who wasn't coming to school. We were, we were targeted on it. And it's like twisting arms. So, Mr. Chair, my question isn't to all of this effort. I respect this effort coming together and trying to address the problem. It is a problem. My problem is with DESI. And with the pressure that they put on an inner-city system like ours, knowing that there are overriding issues, because we're working on this. We have policies in place. We carry out. Everybody's scratching their heads. Parents are not bringing their kids to school like they need to. My cry out is to the parents in this community, please, your child needs to be in school. The 21st century is, is upon us. And there's a lot of opportunity out there for those children who go to school and take the time to become educated. And that education will pay huge dividends. Please, parents, get your children to school. My biggest problem is with DESI, Mr. Chair. And I will continue to look at that, because I don't appreciate the pressure that they put on us, you know, to try to pump up the numbers, because it's a real tough problem. And I think we're approaching it in a very proactive way right now. With that, I yield.
Dr. Malone?
Yes, I just, if I could draw the members' attention to page number three of the report. I just, I want to be very clear. Mr. Aguirre is right. Last, this current year is an anomaly. But we've made steady progress in student attendance since I got here in 2016. We grew it by a whole percentage point, which is a big deal statistically. We've done all of the efforts and the outreach. Yes, there's more things we need to do. Yes, there needs to be some of this tough, tough love, if you will, in terms of, you know, mandatory X, if you don't do Y, kind of things that happen. But April, the cars came in at the end of April. We got them registered and painted first week in June. First week in June, we've had three volunteers to pilot the first ever drive around the city and pick kids up program. So no one slept on anything. No one's failed to do anything. We've done everything. Yeah, there's a production line, you know, in terms of the pipeline of materials. It took a while to get the cars here. But as soon as we got them here, we got them registered, painted, set up. And now we have three that are volunteering to try out what this would look like geographically, so we can make more decisions as to what happens next. So we're on this issue. I, I know this, like, people, when they saw the front page of the Globe, people without fully knowing and understanding the story, said, oh, my God, look at the chronic absenteeism in Fall River. Well, it's the same as it is in a lot of other places. This is a tough year. But we had to do things like mandate double morning and afternoon attendance because of the way kids log in that are learning remotely, those kinds of things. That's really helped us. This past week, right before the last week of school, we got back into the 88 and 89's average daily attendance. You know, our best ever over the, and let's just be honest, our best year ever was the year right before pre-pandemic. When I say ever, I say in recent history, since, you know, we've been under state intervention. So that was probably, what, the early 2000s? So we've, we've done everything we need to do. I think we got the right people in place. There's probably going to be, to Mr. Costa's point, there'll probably be some, as part of our ESER work, the Family and Community Engagement Specialists, we're going to come back and try to get more folks that speak both Portuguese and Spanish, and perhaps French and Arabic, out, working in each site, as community facilitators, doing outreach work. There may be some additional support positions solely targeted on the management of this. But those are things we'll bring back to the committee this summer. We know that this is a part of the ESER investment. We know it also deepens our Student Opportunity Act. So I want to thank my team for, no one's hiding behind this issue. When we flash a light on it, we're not denying, we're not making any excuses. But it is going to be a lot of work. I think Mayor Coogan's point about reculturizing, in terms of, if you will, kids that thought this was, you know, that you don't have to go to school anymore, that's going to be a big deal. But based on the kids that we've had come back, and we're already at 88, 89%, 92, 93, 94, I mean, Spencer Board and Tansey and Watson were rocking 95% attendance the last couple of weeks. So, so we're on this. We'll bring forward any policy changes. We'll also bring forward position requests. This is our number one priority in terms of, we can't knock closed achievement gaps if the kids aren't here. So we know that, and I appreciate the committee's reading of this report. I want to thank Dr. Curly for really doing a lion's share of the, of the, of the analysis and the writing, very quality report. Thank you.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just another follow-up. We talk about the all-hands-on-deck, like the attendance officer having to work with the school adjustment counselors, to work with the vice principals, the principals, at the same time as those people are very busy doing other things. So in light of that, I think we should be making a push for getting those administrators and school adjustment counselors not doing lunch duty and other things for several hours a day, and let them use their expertise to actually work with the families. And if you're in a school, and you get an hour and a half, two hours of your day that you've got to be managing the lunchroom, it becomes a big part of your day, and that's lost time that you could be following up with calls and the like. So if we're looking at positions, sometimes I think we should do something related to that. I've been saying that for several years. It doesn't make any sense to be having our high-skilled counselors and the just, and the administrators doing lunch duty. Obviously, there has to be a presence, but it's another piece of it. We got to free up some people to do what they got to do, and you got to hold them accountable. With that, I yield.
Okay. Thanks for the discussion. We appreciate it, guys. Ms. Ponce, you can stay right there, because you're on the next batch, too. Next item up is 11.2. It's a discussion of the elementary math curriculum, as referred by the instructional subcommittee.
Motion to approve.
Maria Ponce.
Second. Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
We can have discussion, but I think the purposes are put on the table.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead there, Dr. Kennedy.
Thank you for having me. I'm here to talk to you about our goal of providing high-quality core instruction to our students and high-quality instructional routines. And so our current programming in math is standards-based and aligned to the Engage New York scope and sequence. But what you'll find on our map is a list of the standards, and then a variety of resources that teachers can choose from to meet those standards. A lot of time is taken on the part of teachers to skim through those materials and find what could potentially meet the needs of their children, and then differentiate that in order to meet the needs of the kids that are sitting in front of them. And so with that happening, we have little consistency in routines, in tasks, in resources, and in routines from school to school. There's also differences in the quality of the tasks, if teachers are choosing what they want and then changing it up the way that they see fit. Teachers are not curriculum writers. And in having this happening for the past 12 to 15 years, we've seen our math scores remain pretty stagnant. And so knowing that this is the case, and knowing that the state is pushing for us to have a high-quality core program in front of our teachers, our math folks have gone through a process over the past two years to select a program that will be supportive of teaching and learning. And so in December of last year, our, the directors of curriculum were tasked with bringing together a group of educators to talk through and vet different programs, having to do with both math and ELA at that time. And so before we started to launch this work, we met with DESI. DESI came down, and they talked to us about field testing and program selection. And then the group of instructional coaches came together, and we started to vet what was out there based on ed reports and mass curate. We started to vet them through a series of different ways. For example, we started with putting together a list of district priorities as a math group. And then we vetted that list of district priorities through our teacher groups. So it went out in a survey, and we asked teachers to identify what was most important to them. And then from there, we took that information, and we blended it with the mass curate rubric, so that we had not only what the state considered high-quality, but also what our teachers called out as most important. And so from there, we started to meet with different vendors, and started to vet the curricula that they were putting out there through our rubric. We finally narrowed the choices down to two different programs, one of which was illustrative mathematics, which is the program that I want to talk to you about tonight. Illustrative mathematics at the time was in beta, so it was in their second year of research out in the field, and they were making constant changes. So while this was all happening, we also talked about field testing in the process that we were going to take moving forward, after we decided on which two programs we were going to vet through teachers and field testing. And so at the same time, the, there was closure. The pandemic hit, and closure happened, and therefore, we could not do the field studies as we had expected to do. And so another survey went out to teachers, and they gave us their responses as to how important adopting a new core is to teaching and learning in our schools. We had 176 teachers respond, and 89% of those teachers felt that an adoption was in the best interest of teaching and learning. At the time, because the At the time, because the program was in beta form, it had not yet gone through ed reports, nor had it gone through curate. And so, but what we do know about the program is that the current published program for grades six through eight has gone through both of those and is highly rated in all areas of the rubric. And so illustrative math is what we're putting on the table as the program that we'd like to adopt. Illustrative math is created by, is a nonprofit organization that's created by the strongest math leaders that are out there right now. They've come together, they've put together this curriculum as well as chosen high-impact routines that would be alive in all classrooms K to five. It aligns with our forward vision for math instruction, which is inquiry-based, students constructing their own knowledge, problem-based, student-centered, and culturally responsive. It focuses on making connections for students between lessons and across lessons. This adoption would allow for coaches to be more, have more time to build pedagogical and content knowledge in our teachers rather than having them looking through resources when they're with their teachers at the, they'd be able to focus on building their teachers up. And so IM is recommended by DESI. And as I spoke, as I spoke about during the instructional subcommittee meeting, we have applied for the accelerated math grant through DESI. And that accelerated math grant would pay for year one of adoption, including everything from the digital platform to student materials and teacher materials. It would also pay for the manipulatives that we may need in the classrooms based on our current inventory. And we submitted that on June fourth and we've not yet heard back, but we feel fairly confident that that, we would be able to get that grant. Any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. So I was intrigued when I got this, this report, started making some phone calls, just reached out to a couple math, your math people in the department and they're incredible, but they did give me some information so I didn't have to ask a million questions. But they loved the program. So they, they highly regarded. My question is, how come we don't have a math curriculum?
So when I started in the city, it was twenty-one years ago, and at that time, we used Investigations Math. Not too, not many years passed and we had left Investigations Math and we started just kind of putting together things on our own. And so for probably around fifteen years that I've been in the city, we have not had a math program. I don't know what the decisions, why those decisions were made at the time, but they were.
Right. I mean, we have our, especially our elementary teachers that teach a little bit of everything.
Yes.
And when you speak to these teachers, I guess math would be the subject that they're most uncomfortable with. Now, this IM program, is this in lieu, is this curriculum?
This is curriculum.
This would be the curriculum that the Fall River Public Schools would be following in math?
K to five.
K through five?
Yes.
Okay, now, middle, now, what about a math curriculum for middle school?
We just adopted last year Carnegie math.
Carnegie, that's, okay. Now, you said many directors, how many directors of math curriculum do we have? Or is it just directors of curriculum in general?
We, we have, I think that Ms. Kennedy's talking about department heads or coaches, instructional leads. She is the director of the elementary, ELA and math. And Ms. Rabbit is the director for math and ELA for second director.
Yeah, I had mentioned that.
That's why I was confused, okay.
That directors were tasked with, and I meant Cheryl Rabbit and myself.
Okay, all right. I thought you were, I mean, because I know we have the coaches and we have the, what, the interventionists and, and they're all on board with this IM program? Okay. I yield. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hudson?
For some chance, we don't, for some reason, we don't get the grant. Is this something we can afford so we can bring this to the district?
I mean, I, I think so. We do have a lot of money coming into the district, and I know.
The curriculum itself is free.
The program itself is an open ed resource, so it is free technically if we just wanted to download it off of the internet. The thing that the grant offers us is the LearnZillion platform. So the LearnZillion platform is a platform for both teachers and students. So it digitizes the core and makes it interactive for students. So if there was a blended learning station, students would be able to engage in the core that's directly aligned to the, the program itself. In addition, it allows teachers PowerPoints that can be manipulated. And so it's set up in a workshop model and the learning experiences are put on slides so that teachers can use that to guide their work in the classroom. The work that teachers typically have to do themselves, they would be able to just manipulate and make their own, the, the PowerPoints that are on the platform.
So do you know the timeline of the grant? Is this something we'll know, you know, over the summer and we'll be able to roll this out next year?
Yes. So we should know by the fourteenth. We thought, because we had, you know, we put it in early, that maybe we'd hear earlier. But as, as of the last email, June fourteenth should be the date that we find out if we're going on to the next phase, which is submitting quotes for the grant.
Awesome. I look forward to the district using this next year. Thank you. I yield.
It's today.
We didn't get anything yet.
I should check my email.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah, thank you so much for all of the research. I was on the subcommittee that forwarded this to the larger committee. And Ms. Kennedy, you know where I stand as far as math is concerned. I think you have your work cut out for you because it's been a problem in our school district for generations now. One of the, one of the basic issues that I see is that a lot of parents or guardians cannot help the child with their math homework because it's beyond them. And I would fit into that, but when my kids would come home with homework, I was unable to assist them in any way. Is this program going to help in that regard?
So there are family supports in there, but in addition to that, the math coaches are going to be working on workshops that can support parents in helping their students. So leaving school-based PD for parents, but instead making a joint effort across schools and holding it in different areas of the city so that parents can easily get there.
Good. So there's going to be an attempt to bring parents in?
Yes.
That's so important because that's what the child also needs as well. My, my second comment, Mr. Chair, is along the lines of attendance again and how real critical good school attendance is for our math scores, especially in the early grades, the elementary level, where all the foundational work is. So good school attendance is critical at that level in order to be able to grasp, you know, the depth of these programs and so that parents and guardians can also latch on to the rigor behind these programs so that we can collectively build our math scores up. Now, I'm going back, Ms. Ponce, and you can relate with me on this, and Mr. Damaris can also, but I'm going to go back around to two thousand fourteen, two thousand thirteen, two thousand twelve, somewhere around there. Mr. Coogan also can as well. When Durphy, we lost a ton of math teachers and we weren't able to really properly, you know, educate those kids along those lines. So math teachers were leaving our system. They may be in short supply. We need to also incubate new math teachers. We need to have really fresh approaches in the classroom. Classroom is so critical. It's the most critical aspect of education is the classroom. So I hope we can bring in more teachers. I hope this program works well. I'll keep my fingers crossed, but we've got to get these kids in school in order for this to become effective. With that, I yield.
Anything further on the math curriculum? Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, you did a nice presentation at the subcommittee. I fully support it. One of the things that just, I, I always felt this way, that the scores are flat in the city, and that's just a fact. And by reading this, historically, our add-plus-advantage data has been stagnant. Cohorts have not made gap closing gains as they progress from grade to grade. And overall, student performance looks the same across. So basically, I think you're in agreement at the meeting that the scores are flat and we need to do something. Am I wrong to say that?
No, I agree with you.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Costa?
Just quickly, I also want to thank Ms. McDonald and Ms. Caballo. They also had sent the committee their thoughts regarding, you know, this new math program and its proposal. I want to thank you, Ms. Kennedy, for your presentation, not only to the subcommittee but here tonight. I wish all the best with it. If you could keep us posted on the grant award, maybe they have till midnight to decide, who knows? But if it's coming from DESI, then it's anybody's guess, I guess. But regardless, I think even if they don't come through with it, I think in order to be able to make it work with the type of assistance needed for our educators, that's a key component. I mean, it's one thing to be able to download it off the internet, but then to have that support that comes along with it, I think is extremely important. So I know we talked about that at the subcommittee, but for some reason, we're not considered. I, I don't know why we wouldn't, given our scores. I, I think they would look at that right away and say, gee, this is a district that certainly could benefit from our assistance, given they came down and met with us and sort of collaborated, if you will, on this proposal. You would think that we'd be, you know, in consideration or highly considered by them for some assistance. But if not, you know, I think that's something that we can certainly, if you would, through Ms. Ponce, the superintendent, bring that forward so that we can take action on it because one would out the other. If we're going to do it, let's do it right. I yield.
Thank you. Okay. I appreciate it, guys. Ms. Ponce, don't go anywhere.
Roll call?
Roll call? I thought it was just a discussion.
Oh, I thought there was a vote. No, I stand corrected, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, my mistake, too.
I thought, I thought there was a vote.
Since we just talked about the grant, and I think at the subcommittee, we talked about if there's no money, can we make a motion to approve that? I think Mr. Costa's point was to say, if we don't get the grant, go forward.
Let's go forward. I agree. All right. We've got a motion to second on going forward with or without the grant. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Most necessary.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and vote to approve the health curriculum is referred to the Instructional Subcommittee and presented by Ms. Ponce and Michelle Sharp.
So Ms. Sharp is going to join me. She has been working on this for quite some time and brought it to the subcommittee, Instructional Subcommittee, actually, twice. The first time she presented and then there were some additional questions and she went back to get those answers and came to the committee again last week to present and now we're ready for the committee as a whole. This is curriculum that she's been vetting and has done extensive research on and is ready to, we're ready to roll with it if, if the committee agrees.
Go ahead. Thank you very much for having me here to talk about this. I just think first that I need to go back in time just to give you a perspective of how we got, where we are. Real briefly, in two thousand and two, the Fall River Public Schools employed a health coordinator who had three health educators who traveled to the small neighborhood elementary schools to provide health lessons and puberty lessons for our fifth-grade students. The educators were mainly female, so they would instruct the girls puberty lessons. And if a male PE teacher was at the school, they would teach the puberty lessons to the boys. And two thousand nine, two thousand twelve, larger schools were built and the health coordinator and health educator positions were eliminated. At that time, it was determined by the school committee that health lessons, introducing reproductive health would not be taught until the students were in the ninth grade. So until they got to the high school. And where we are currently now, in two thousand sixteen, there was a chapter fifty-two substance abuse that was put forth from the state. So every school department had to have a substance abuse program in place from the middle school to the high school. At that time was when I had come in that summer and previous to that, as a school committee, you had approved Karen Long and Brad Bustin, who moved forward to do the life skills health curriculum, which is a substance prevention program. So at that time, it was brought in. I then did the training and had the teachers doing that. And then what happened was in two thousand sixteen, in two thousand seventeen, all the middle schools were having that life skills program in place, so sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. In two thousand nineteen, I wrote a grant through South Coast because the YRBS data was showing that our students were having their first interaction with drugs and alcohol at the age of ten. So age ten is not middle school, it's elementary. So it felt very strongly that we needed to bring a program to our elementary because I didn't want to miss that opportunity to get to our students in need. And then at that time, we now have our health curriculum, which was approved by you, and it is grades three through eight that have the life skills program. Henry Lloyd Community School does have a K to eight program because they do have a wellness teacher there. And at Bonzaker, there's a K to two program and then, of course, a three to five. We do supplant with Katie Brown. They come in from grades three up to twelfth grade. There's about three to four lessons in their instruction. And we also have UMass Extension for Nutrition, which works with our younger students from K to three on nutrition education. So what I'm bringing forth to you today is a proposal to bring forth reproductive health in our younger grades. And what I would like to see is that we have puberty lessons that would happen back like we did in two thousand and two for our fifth-grade students. The curriculum that I would be proposing is a proctor and gamble, always changing and growing up puberty education program. It consists of four modules, which is, one is growth and development of puberty, two is girls and boys reproductive systems, and three is stay competent and healthy, and four is healthy relationships. A lot of the education as far as puberty lessons is based off the relationships, which aligns with our current curriculum, which is our life skills, which is also based on positive decision-making and making best relationships and best choices. That program actually would be just for the fifth grade. It would be, take over, place about three to four lessons. Currently, the health classes are held for one trimester out of the three. And what we were able to work out is that we put one of the health classes in place of a PE class just for one trimester. And that is the PE teacher that teaches that health curriculum for our elementary. So this program here, it has, it's free. It is online. Everything is downloadable. It is, by far, I had gone through, I surveyed sixty districts and overwhelmingly, this was the best choice that was made for the puberty lessons, as was asked when I was at the last meeting to survey our principals and talk to the teachers about how they felt about having these lessons. I did share that earlier, but I do have a, I think I have maybe three principals that weren't represented overall. So the elementary principals had said, I feel strongly it would be beneficial. It is supportive to our students. They're exposed to so much through social media, so you'd be surprised at what they already know. I think that we need to get them that right information. Sounds good. It's developmentally appropriate. It's important and I support it. I strongly support puberty lessons in grade five health. Students need this essential information as humans. They need it. So that was the feedback that I got asking the question about elementary health. And the next proposal piece of that is for our middle school program. And the middle school program, I am proposing that we adopt the GetReal Second Edition for Middle School Program. This program was developed by Planned Parenthood League of Massachusetts and is published by ETR, which is the Education Training and Research Evidence-Based Curriculum. It meets Castle's highest designation for evidence-based program. It is developmentally appropriate, inclusive of the LGBTQ and youth trauma-informed, and it is aligned with our national health education standards. A big piece of, when I brought forth the health education, a big piece was not only about the, the drugs and alcohol and speaking about that, was also meeting the social and emotional needs of our children, making sure that there's a place where they could feel comfortable to talk about things that maybe they may not feel comfortable talking about at home. And I certainly, as much as I, I'd like them to have their peer relationships, I want them to have the most factual information possible. This curriculum here is a three-year middle school curriculum. It is nine lessons per year, so it would be added in with the current health curriculum that we already have. It is about thirty to forty-five minutes. In each lesson, there is a parent letter that goes home that informs the parents exactly what will be taught of per thirty-two A, section thirty-two A. We have to inform our parents of any reproductive health instruction that we have in school. And in doing so, we have to give the parents the opportunity to choose to opt their children out of such education. We do that at the high school and it would be something that we would do at the middle level and also as a puberty lessons, too. These kids, this curriculum is not free. But in looking at this, other curriculums that are there, this was overwhelming But in looking at this, other curriculums that are there, this was overwhelmingly the number-one choice for our middle school students for reproductive health. It would include, and I would want to do this, to have the training for our teachers. Teachers need to feel comfortable in presenting this information. They need to have all the information that they can to have the best lessons to engage our students in conversation. I will tell you right now that we have students that ask these particular questions, and we redirect as much as possible, because we know we don't have the permission at this point to speak about such topics. So I also surveyed our middle school principals, and I asked them how they felt about having the program. And they had said that, I think it is important, as students are already exploring sexuality and engaging in sexual behaviors in middle school, yes, the same as I felt with the elementary, and important, needed, training for staff, need to ensure presentation is sensitive to students' age and LGBTQ sensitivity. I fully support sexual education at the middle school. When I asked them about this particular program, because I had provided them with it, I only reviewed briefly, but a review of the topics do seem to be age-appropriate, as these are topics that we are consistently addressing with students in a reactive manner, rather than a proactive manner. Lessons seem appropriate for middle school students and cover a wide range of topics, all appropriate, relevant, and timely. Important, needed. I fully support sexual education at the middle school level. So this is proposal I'm putting forth is reproductive health lessons in grades six through eight, and puberty lessons in grade five for the 2021 and 22 school year. Providing an evidence-based sexual health education that can improve academic success, prevent dating violence and bullying, help youth develop healthier relationships, delay sexual initiation, excuse me, and reduce unplanned pregnancy, HIV, and other STIs, and reduce sexual health disparities among our LGBTQ youth. I do want to just give one last piece, is that our girls are starting to have puberty as young as eight and nine years of age, much younger than previous generations, and that is third and fourth grade. So puberty education is needed to prevent children from being frightened by the unexplained changes in their bodies and emotions. Puberty with the onset of sexual feelings is beginning earlier, but marriage is being delayed until ages about approximate 28. This combination of factors results in a long interval of time during which young people must manage their sexuality in healthy ways. In order to prepare young people to do so, we must begin before they are sexually active. I know that a lot of people would say that this is education that should be in the hands of families, and some families would say that that is what they choose to do. But there are a lot of parents that are not comfortable with that role, and would very much welcome the school's support. Without learning reliable sex education, these students would be left on their own, which is always dangerous, to figure out what they want to do. Avoiding the subject of sex does not prepare young people to make healthy choices, but providing research-based sex education can prevent risk behaviors and help young people develop into sexually healthy adults. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Larrabee?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much. Very informative. I just want to comment on the testimonials. They are spot-on. I mean, we need this in our district so badly. Our students are in need of this information. Could you tell me how many, I guess, I don't know if you have this left up, if you had, how many parents opt out?
Yes. At the high school, not this year, because we didn't do...
Right, right. I mean, forget this.
Yeah, but online, I didn't feel comfortable doing that without knowing, you know, who's in the room and whatnot. On an average, at the high school, I would say, with Health One, I counted it up the last few years, we had about 45 students that opted out, and then Health Two was lower, which was 15.
Okay.
I will say, though, that there is some collusion that happens with that. We have some students that say, hey, you know, get yourself signed up, so we can go hang out in the library.
Right.
Or, you know, so there is a little bit of that. We do struggle, because it is a active policy that we have, and we have to get the signatures of the parents before we can present. And if we don't have that, then the students are assigned to a study hall with an alternate assignment. So that becomes tricky, because we have classes going all through the day, and we have to find the locations. But more than anything, it's not that, it's the fact that we know the kids need to be in the classes. I sit in the Health One and Health Two classes, and it would blow your mind, some of the things that are said. The misinformation is horrible.
I see it.
Yeah, it's horrible. And, you know, you know, you see, work with the youth, and it's just, some of the things, I'm like, oh, my goodness, they really believed us, you know? So I really, I feel strongly that this is something that we need to bring for our students.
So this curriculum right here, the sixth to eighth, okay, this is brand-new. This is what you're putting on the table, and that same policy is the parents have to sign off their names stating that they can participate.
Yes, that's the current policy that we have now. I did do some research. Out of the 45 districts that I had researched, only four do an active permission.
Right.
They all do a passive.
Right. I wish we could maybe revisit the policy. These kids need this dialogue. They, our students are in need of this desperately. I think our parents as well. The policy states that they have to sign off. We have to get a piece of paper with their name on it. I mean, can we do the opposite? And if these parents don't sign their name and just don't return anything, can we keep them in this program? You know, is it something that just got lost or forgot to do, and we can just assume that the parents, it's part of our Fall River Public School curriculum, this health curriculum?
The state of Massachusetts requires that you inform parents. It does not require that you have signed permission from parents.
There you go. So we can inform, we can send a letter, we can send the email. What I'm asking, I guess, is if we don't get anything back, can we put our students through this program, especially the middle school age right now? That's what I'm focused on.
I do have a bunch of policies from the students.
I read, yeah, I read them, actually, yeah. So, and they differed a little bit.
Everyone's different in how they word it.
Yep. I yield, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
I gotta go to Mr. Agnew first, then Mr. Costa, then you.
So based on Mrs. Larrabee's comments, that was asked at the subcommittee, and I asked Ms. Sharp directly what she was recommending, and it was to recommend the passive, to change the policy from active to passive, which I agree with. Because if it is something that is needed, we would just be able to vote on it, and obviously the majority wins. Just recently, I read the email while I was here that you sent her on five o'clock that said, I think it was two-thirds of the principals recommended to the passive, you know, looking at the bar graph, but I could be wrong, but I think that's what the principals requested. And I want to say, one of them mentioned that with two opportunities to reach out, so it's not just like one letter didn't get sent or whatever, so with two, obviously, that's a recommendation of the principals. At the meeting, I suggested to you to poll the principals, and I would trust what you say and what the principals say. So based on your recommendation, what the principals say, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the program with a change to a passive announcement to the parents. That's a motion.
Second.
I got a motion, a second. Do you yield, Mr. Agnew?
Yeah, I yield, thank you.
Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Ms. Sharp. I want to, once again, thank you for all the work you put into this proposal. I mean, we're before our subcommittee, instructional subcommittee, twice, which in and of itself speaks volumes. So thank you for coming back the second time. I absolutely agree. This is something this district absolutely needs, where I have some hot burn, I guess, as a parent, and someone who, I guess, considers myself somewhat traditional. Parents have rights, and I understand the law doesn't require this notification, but as parents, you have the right to decide what your son or daughter is exposed to in their school. And so I voted for it when it was before as forever and a day ago, that we have the active permission, that parents actively give the school district permission for their son or daughter to be a part of this. And I feel that same way now. And I respect your position, I respect other districts' positions, and I respect the principals' position on it. The bottom line is those children belong to parents who have a right to make decisions. And so that's my feeling on it. I can't say strongly enough that unfortunately, our students are learning too much on social media. It's become the new Encyclopedia Britannica, back in the day. They go to the social media for everything these days. And so, and that concerns me, because the stuff that's out there is troublesome, and I don't know if that's the best venue for it. But I also struggle with, you know, making decisions that take away the parents' permission. Now, I like the two letters, and I don't think, and I express this, I don't think that we should be chasing. You know, you mentioned that there are some, you know, schools that have sent out multiple letters.
We do a log, and we keep record of how many times we've called, some families we've called.
And I think we make good faith effort in doing that, and then if you don't hear back, maybe it's because truly the parent doesn't want to, you know, weigh in on it and know that they don't have to, and their son or daughter won't participate in it. And so I agree with the curriculum wholeheartedly. I would support that motion that's on the table now, if it didn't also include a policy change, which I don't know is best practice anyway, because policy in this district requires a first read, a second read, or some sort of emergency preamble that waves all readings when we establish policy. But I would support the curriculum itself, and maybe have further discussion about what we do about the policy and parents having the ability to give permission to the school district for their sons or daughters to participate in. I gave the example, the last thing I want is a child coming home and telling mom and dad what they just learned this afternoon in school, and having parents have a fallout at the table, because it may be against their own personal, religious, or cultural beliefs, and maybe they just missed the memo, or maybe they didn't get the email, or maybe we didn't have the correct email or whatever for them to notify them. That's my concern, and for what that's worth.
We do have parents that opt out because of religious and cultural reasons. What did come up in the conversation, Mr. Agnew, said that overwhelmingly, at the middle school level, they were looking for a passive, because I know they know what we do at the high school and how, you know, how difficult it can be. But also, it also came up, as you mentioned, about two letters, but also at the elementary, there were concerns with the fifth graders not having some type of communication with the parents. What did come up, and being honest, and what we discussed, was what if you have a parent that doesn't speak a certain language, and you don't get that communicated in the way that you would like to? So there was, you know, a look at that also. I still put forth about the passive, especially at the middle school, but I could understand if that needed to be adjusted, or, you know, is some sort of, you know, check and balance as far as it is concerned with our ELL population and concern for that.
I couldn't agree with you more, and that's why the suggestion would be to pump the brakes, particularly with policy. We can sit here and amend and make policy on anything, that's what this body does, but I think we've set forth a procedure for doing that, where we have a read, we have input, we can tweak it if necessary, so we can all feel comfortable with it. I'll just say that, again, I won't support it if it comes with a policy change tonight. But it'd be the will of this committee ultimately, it decides, not me. I just wanted to share my personal feelings on it. With that, I yield.
And I appreciate that. And I would just say, going forward, if it's not something that you vote on in policy, to please consider it for the high school level and the middle school level.
Anything, Mr. Corey? Oh, I'm sorry, I told Dr. Maloney.
I just want to, for everyone's attitude, I would suggest that I would approve the curriculum and refer to the policy subcommittee the issue of passive or active approval, because I do agree that in Fall River, this needs to be vetted. So I would ask that the committee vote kindly to approve the curriculum. This is progress. But at the same time, we can work over the summer to come up with a policy that makes sense that we can implement in the fall. That's all.
Anything further, Mr. Corey?
I just wanted to echo my colleague's comments, as being the traditionalist that I am, I have trepidation, there's no doubt about it. I do recognize that you guys have been focused on the progress of this issue. I've worked directly with this issue in my career as an educator. I get it loud and clear. As a parent, I just find it to be a very sensitive topic, and family discussions are not classroom discussions. What goes on in a classroom isn't necessarily what goes on over a dinner table. And I just worry about the appropriate, I guess, as you said, Ms. Sharp, the developmentally appropriate nature of the curriculum, which I know is essential for our youth to learn and to be privy to, especially with the advent of social media on us. That being said, I'm still queasy about it. I don't want to feel bad about feeling queasy, because I'm an old style, I'm an old-school traditionalist, but yet I recognize the diversity of our children these days and their needs and their efforts. So I just wanted to get my thoughts out, because I needed to get my thoughts out publicly on this. I do respect all the research and the vetting, and so with that, I yield, Mr. Chair. I don't, I still don't know what to think. I'm still a little bit on the fence. I yield, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hetsler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to amend the motion to approve the curriculum and refer the policy change to the subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, and we have another motion on the first one to pass it, so. All right, Ms. Larrabee?
Yep, just quickly.
Keep track of that phone, please. Go ahead.
You're good? Thank you. Just to, on top of what you said, you talk about the family dinner table, okay? We're gonna go back, how many years with you, even, there are still families at the dinner table, but the kids that we serve, a lot of them are from single-parent households. Some of them, the parents are working, they end up at the club for dinner, breakfast at school, lunch at school, so there isn't a dinner table, and there isn't, I mean, the single parents have to work. You know, and the information, a lot of these kids, they're just not getting it. You know, they're not getting it at home. And this is why I am passionate about this, because if they're not getting it, I think we should be held accountable to ensure that these kids are getting the information. And I so support the motion to bring it back to policy, but I, great job on the curriculum. It needs to be in our district, more than you'll ever know. That, I yield.
You have some discussion? Yeah, I mean, I just want to say, I absolutely agree, it needs to be here in the district, that curriculum. And my kids, first grade, third grade, they know, like, they know where babies come from, like, it's very important, but some families aren't comfortable with that yet. And I understand that, which is why I'd like to have it, wrote before the policy, subcommittee first, where we can put some different checks and balances in place, maybe, like you said, the fifth grade, there's the active, you know, participation, and in the middle schools and high school, maybe it's passive, you know? But I think that would be a wiser decision for us tonight. With that, I yield.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms., for coming tonight. You did a really good job with the presentation. I will support the motion by Mr. Hetsler. I just wanted to clarify something, though, what Mr. Costa said. The passive approach has the potential of the child coming home and saying to mom and dad, guess what I learned today, and they didn't realize that that was going to, what he was gonna be, or she was gonna be taught, right?
We also do, too, and one part, that's part of the plan, is we send home a letter before we start any health curriculum, to let them know that we're starting it. And then at the high school, when we start our sexual education lessons, we send home another letter to let them know, just in case they didn't realize and they want to opt them out, we give them that option in the letter, and of course, now we have to have it signed, so we make sure we send that home, too. Part of the plan, and that I presented to the principals, was is that I would like to have the opportunity to speak at the parent groups and do webinars, and start the school year off with at least getting it rolling, so parents are aware of what this is.
Right.
And they can take a look at it and read through it, and if there's any questions, they can ask me about them. And I don't want to, I don't want to push it, you know, right in.
Sure.
I want to do is be able to make sure that I get the solid training, because that's so important to me for my teachers, that they feel comfortable, and that the children get the best that they can out of that education. So there has to be a lot of front-loading that needs to happen first, and then we can roll with that coming to, like, the late, you know, the late fall, going into the winter. And that's what, kind of like the timeline I'm looking at.
Okay. No, I just agree with the, that's...
No, I, I just agree with the, that, that would be my concern too, what Vice Chairman Costa said. Um, but you did do, you said that you did some surveys with principals and, uh, and, and get feedback from them. Did you try, did you try it with the parents too, or would that have been too much of a task?
No, I didn't, I didn't with the parents. I, I have, um, almost daily conversations with parents sometimes about this. Some of them are like, you know, please make sure my child knows this. And then other people are like, oh, no, oh, no, they're not gonna be in that class. So I, it varies, it depends on who I'm speaking to.
Yep.
Um, but it seems more overwhelmingly that they want their children to have that information. And, um, I had one gentleman I just spoke to the other day said, I just tell them to go to my wife because I just can't deal with this, you know? And so he's like, thank you very much, I don't wanna deal with this. Um, so it, it is, sometimes it gets humorous and that, and in, in my household, it's go talk to mom, so.
Yep, right, exactly.
It hasn't anything to do with it, so.
All right, well, thank, thank you very much for your time. Thank you, I yield.
Okay, anything, Kevin? I mean, not Mr. Aga.
So, I'm not sure what, what I'm even seeing again here. What I, what I continually see lately is a dysfunctional administration. We had a subcommittee meeting where we suggested and asked you as the director, you as the assistant superintendent, and I'm not sure if the superintendent was there or he had come and gone at the meeting, but we asked at a public meeting what your opinion was on whether it should be active or passive.
And I still stand by that. I think it should be passive.
Correct. But now we sit here today, three weeks later or at least a couple of weeks later, and we think that we're supporting what you suggested and recommended as the director. You pulled the principals, they recommend it. Then we got a superintendent that now says, no, I, sorry, I think we should have, go to the policy subcommittee and make recommendations. Why wouldn't you just make the recommendations between the time three weeks ago and now? So now we're sitting here saying, well, let's just take the vote. Take a vote and transparent. If you wanna vote for it, yes. If not, you vote no. Why are we gonna go down and look at it if you're not in favor of it? Just vote no. We're just gonna wait, oh, let's approve it, but then let's wait until July or August. Then we'll figure it out, push it down a little more and then we'll go. When are we gonna get to, to the point where we just say, we make a subcommittee, you make a recommendation? I take it that you're representing the administration when you say, this is what we recommend? So now superintendent says something opposite of what you say. Where's the recommendation? Is it what you really want or is it what superintendent? I, I just don't get it. Why are we not on the same page on this particular issue? I just don't get it.
Do I need to answer him? Who, who, who's going next, guys? You?
You're the chair.
No, you, you raise your hand first, go ahead.
I didn't raise my hand, I said, do I need to answer him?
Go ahead, I thought you were talking to me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the reason he came here with a recommendation from Ms. Shop is that so that every member of the committee had an opportunity to hear the presentation and what our recommendation was. And so she only had that opportunity to talk to three members of the subcommittee in instruction. And so the reason it came here was so that you had the opportunity to speak to all of us. I can count, Mr. Hetzel's not comfortable approving it with policy, didn't sound like Mr. Hart was, and I'm not, and Mr. Corey was. So if we wanna have the role to include the policy change, we can do that, but one, two, three, four, I'm gonna assume it's gonna be a four, three, maybe five, two vote. And as a result, we're gonna be right back to square one, going back to referring it to policy, where we create policy, where we have a first read, where we have a second read. Or we, sometimes we don't. Sometimes it's an emergency and we pass it right through. But I don't think we get away from the fact that we're supportive of the, your curriculum. I think, again, we can count, sounds like it's unanimous, it's needed. For all the reasons you heard here tonight, we definitely need a curriculum that addresses this particular health issue for all our students. The question is whether or not we want to, on the fly, just usurp parental right in it or do we wanna be more, um, pragmatic, more, uh, if we wanna do more diligence with it and, and vet it so that we have a good, sound policy that captures enough in it that everybody on this committee gives, uh, consent to a policy that gets this done. And I think we can get there and I think it possibly can be a unanimous vote. I, I just don't see that happening tonight, but I yield.
Anything further on this? Okay. Um, Deb, you gotta give me these votes, buddy, please.
I have an amended motion made by Mr. Hetzler and seconded by Mr. Corey to approve the curriculum and refer the policy change to the policy subcommittee.
Call, call the roll on that one.
Mr. Aga?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
On the motion?
I'll, I'll go ahead, Ms. Aga.
It was just the amendment, right?
The next one, Deb.
No, but that, that carries, just point of order. The amendment carries it. You got a unanimous vote?
Seven.
So my, my only comment is, is my comment wasn't related to the school committee. My comment is to the administration. That was not meant to be any slight at any of my colleagues on policy or anything. What my frustration was is that we went and said, this is what the administration wants. I did not hear the superintendent trying to lobby the position of what his administrators said at the meeting. That's the disconnect that I was talking about. I'm not trying to pass judgment on my colleagues here. All I was saying is that it would, it seems like there's a disconnect between something because normally you'd get, yeah, we really want this program and we'd like it to be passive. And I didn't, I really saw like a passive attempt to try to, to, to say what you feel as an administration. That's my, when I say dysfunctional, that's what I was talking about, not the school committee. With that, I yield.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ms. Costa.
And I, and I won't belabor it, but I, but I think what's important in all of this is that the feedback we gave Ms. Shop and, and Ms. Potts was that to vet with principals about the active passive and bring it forward. I can say I honestly didn't think we were changing policy tonight. I really thought you were gonna give us a presentation on what the curriculum looked like and also the, the responses that you received from the research you did regarding other districts and how to handle it, as well as some of the feedback you got from principals and teachers in our district. That was my expectation. Um, and again, I think it's, it's great that we have policy, I mean, uh, the curriculum in place and I, I'm convinced we'll get the policy right and it'll come back. And I think it'll do what we all need it to do and that's get the message out to kids, but also protecting the rights of parents. With that, I yield.
One more take, please.
Uh, Ms. Larvee?
Sorry, sorry. I just wanted to say thank you for the, uh, the great job in the Special Olympics at Durfee. I wasn't able to go, but I heard it was spectacular. But again, thank you.
Yeah, we had a great day, it was a great event. So thank you. A lot of, a lot of teamwork, a lot of teamwork, so, yes.
Great job.
Thank you.
Anything else, Deb? What else, Deb?
That's it, they have been the board.
Mr. Costa had informed me about the previous item. He needed to clarify something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, if I can just, the committee's indulgence with a motion to reconsider. The previous item with math curri- curriculum is listed as just discussion and I know the committee took a vote to allow for the funding regardless of the grant was awarded. Um, but I don't know if that goes far enough in, in terms of accepting the math curriculum for the district. And so I'll defer to the chair, but I would make a motion to reconsider that vote and include the acceptance of the math curriculum for the district in addition to the funding piece. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, on clarifying the last item in the discussion.
So it'd just be a motion to reconsider and then once that goes, then we do on the main.
All right, uh, Deb, please.
Mr. Aga?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, a motion would read to, the, the committee accepts the, uh, presented math curriculum, um, adopts the, the math curriculum as presented in addition to, uh, the funding, um, regardless of whether or not Desi awards the grant.
Deb, a second?
Second.
I have a s- motion, a second? That's what we did, all right, go ahead, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aga?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Eleven point four. I believe this one's been amended, a discussion and vote. The following job description, associate principal for student support at Durfee High School. The other one has been held for now, presented by Maria Potts.
Thank you. Uh, what you have before you is a job descri- description that says a result of, um, Durfee High School's restructuring. They, as part of their redesign, um, they had a, um, site visit. Um, they debriefed with, um, the folks from, um, uh, School Works and, uh, did a prioritization session and talked about priorities and how they were going to move Durfee forward. I think that everyone here knows that Durfee needs to be in a, a better place. Um, Mr. Principal Damaris and his team, um, met on multiple occasions. He met with his administrative team as well as with his faculty and defined what a high performing high school should look like and sound like for adults as well as for kids. And as a result, they are restructuring their administrative structure. Um, Mr. Uh, Damaris is proposing that in addition to his associate principal for academics, that he has a counterpart for, um, SEL, uh, an AP for, um, that's going to oversee, uh, the work of the VPs and really, uh, support, uh, the social emotional needs of the school. Um, certainly I can, um, have Mr. Damaris weigh in on, on this decision, but, um, we feel that this is a, uh, a crucial part of the redesign um, as we continue to move Durfee to where it needs to be.
Any discussion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aga?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Upstate.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next, next item, I'm sorry, Mr. Aga.
Yeah, so on the agenda, I, I do understand that they wanna pull, uh, the other two descriptions, but can I just get an explanation of why they're being pulled?
They're not ready for discussion. That was our error putting them on.
They're not ready for discussion?
Not ready for discussion.
So just to weigh in on that, like, my, and I said this at the instructional subcommittee, I don't think personally, we need more administrative positions. And, um, when you look at this particular situation, we have a current director of the parent center who, due to complaints filed against the superintendent, isn't part of these type of discussions.
Do I gotta put up with more this night?
Mr. Aga, please. They pulled it, it's not on the agenda. Let's go to the next item.
I'm referring to a question.
When it comes back, you can say whatever you please.
And my question is related to why. And I don't think the administration's being truthful with the committee explaining why.
Yeah, but that's, that's not, that's not for us to judge. He said that he's not ready for it. That's all he said. And when they're ready, they'll bring it back.
Right. So they made a request, they made a request to pull it. At, I'm acting on that request.
Right.
I'm making a comment and a suggestion based on that request.
Yeah, but it's not on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
Well, it's, it's on the right written agenda.
Says right here. Discussion and vote to approve. The two different positions.
Okay.
With the job descriptions that were given us in, in our package.
I got a feeling it's gonna come back and that's when they can explain it to us. That's all I do, I'm, they're not doing it tonight.
What I'm doing is just weighing in on something that's on the agenda is my point.
But it's been pulled, so let's be fair.
It was asked to be pulled and I'm making a judgment.
Who asked to pull it?
The, the administration sent us an email at whatever time, right before the thing, to say miraculously at 5:30, we figure out that we, we're not ready to pull something after you've gone through it, after you've done, you sent us information, after we as school committee has tried to prepare whether we're gonna vote for it or not, last minute we pull it, oh, well, why? There's more to that story than, oh, we're just not ready.
Yeah, but.
If anybody doesn't believe that, I, I got another one for you.
I know.
With that, I yield.
All right, thank you. All right, let's go to the next item, please. Wow. A discussion and vote to approve a partnership between the four public schools and Health First to provide basic health and dental services for students of the four public schools and provide a location.
Motion to approve.
Within the Nagel Building.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on this item, Mr. Pacheco?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this, there's a, um, a moving trend across, uh, the state to provide some healthcare in, um, for nine through 12th graders at the high school setting. Um, we did not design this into the high school, however, we wanted to participate in this program. And, um, we do have room in the auditorium building, the Nagel building, uh, to provide, uh, space for both, uh, medical and dental. And it would, um, also help us with the, uh, pay center for, um, any newcomers to the district where we're trying to look for inoculations and different things for students. And if they do not have what they need, we would be able to provide that. Health First would be able to provide that. So, um, they've applied for a grant. Uh, I've attached that backup in the, um, in the paperwork and they're hopefully going to have an answer in September, um, which would work for us because the areas, uh, the area that they're looking at would be available by then.
Not so much discussion, Mr. Chair, but commentary and, um, really, this is a proposal to me that represents progress. Um, I'm gonna try to go back maybe about ten to twelve years or so ago, maybe even slightly longer, where there was a, a firm proposal on behalf of those working in Durfee High School to create a student service center that would handle exactly what Mr. Pacheco just outlined with, um, medical, dental and, 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 and it would also help with our student hygiene issues and, and all of the things that come up with that. I think its time is definitely here and, uh, I really like this proposal. I just wanted to make that commentary because we have looked at this before deeply in the past, but it got shot down by the school committee at that time. So I would hope that the school committee may reconsider and say, yeah, this is a proposal that makes a lot of sense. With that, I yield.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it makes a, a lot of sense. Unfortunately, I think it may fall just a little short, but I'll support it because I think it's, it's progress. It's something. I think the key piece that's missing is the mental health services. And, and talked about it a number of times here about, you know, how do we, how do our students access mental health services? For some of those, for some of them who are trying that on their own, long waitlist, frustration kicks in, there's no follow through, et cetera, et cetera. And that the end result is that our students in some cases are suffering, um, you know, with social emotional issues. And so I really would like to see either through this proposal, there be a component that's added that includes the ability for Saks and others within our district to refer students to this center for at least mental health screening. Now, I understand taking on the role of, of, um, doing the treatment may be cumbersome. I think we can get there and, and I think, um, we should get there. But I think at least initially, the screening process, getting somebody who is struggling within our district a student before a clinician is qualified to do a good, sound mental health screening and then either help make referrals or assist with the referrals, but then follow up on them. And so if that's a service we need to take on down the road, I know that, um, a couple of years back, I was having a conversation with Senator Rodjik's who had asked if Fall River had something like that because there was a, a piece of legislation or a piece of the budget. I think it was the budget that a couple of years back, I believe it was New Bedford, got funded, um, a good, um, amount of money to facilitate a mental health clinic type. I think it may have been similar to this. It may have had some, uh, basic health needs and dental, but I think it also focused on the mental health piece. So I'll support this because I think it, it opens up the door for us to be able to build on it. But I can't stress enough that in this district, in addition to immunizations and, and other health screenings and dental, mental health is, is right up there with, with the population we're dealing with. And I think we have a lot of students in our district whose mental health's going unchecked, um, particularly coming off or coming out of a pandemic. Um, so if there's a way that, um, you, uh, Mr. Pacheco can work with Health First So, if there's a way that you, Mr. Pacheco, can work with Health First or whomever's taking on this proposal, I, I think that's a piece that's solely missing, and I'd ask that it, that it be included. With that, I yield.
I, I just gotta make a very brief comment before I go to Mr. Corey. This is from Senator Rodjic. Mr. Costa, he approached myself and Ken Pacheco. I do have to acknowledge, the first time I heard about this came from you a couple of years back, it kinda lagged for a while, but I know he put in an earmark or he appropriated some money for us to go forward with this, and Health First stepped up with the match, and Ken Pacheco was nice enough to help us with the space. I think what's gonna happen is exactly what you said, because of the size of the space, which Health First was totally impressed with, that the kind of offices you're looking for can melt right into it. But it is coming straight from Senator Rodjic, so we should acknowledge it.
Thank you to Senator Rodjic and all those who were involved, and yourself, Mayor, but again, I, I see it here as, as basic health and dental. I didn't see the mental health piece, but if that's gonna be included, it's, it's, it's great.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Corey?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to acknowledge the vice chairman again. Those were very astute remarks on your part, Mr. Vice Chair. I think the mental health piece is critical to fulfilling the mission of this Health First Center, and Ken, when you guys are designing the space for this at the Pace Center, right?
Yes.
Or wherever it's gonna be, can you make sure to design some counseling spaces that would be enclosed for confidentiality? And I know that at the high school currently, I know that when I was there also, there was a steady stream of outside providers from all the mental health agencies coming in to provide the outside counseling service piece to the students at the high school because, again, transportation is a core issue affecting so many kids that can't get to a counselor's office after school. So, if we could develop a real good registry of outside providers and, and just have them streaming into that center to provide the counseling services necessary beside the dental and everything else that's gonna be provided there, I would really appreciate that outlook as well. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, for that astute remark on your part, and I completely backed that up. I yield.
Any further discussion, Mr. Agia?
Yeah, I agree with what everyone said. This would be a good program. We do have to expand it. Been saying for over a year and a half now that we need to get a child psychiatrist on retainer. We all agree. Still hasn't happened, and that's the missing link a lot of times. It's not only the council, there's limitations with mass health, how many providers you can get, but we, the students need to see sometimes there's somebody to maintain their medication, things like that. We need to provide that service, and it's been at least a year and a half, probably more, that it's been brought up, but still to no avail. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
If I could just, one last thing.
Sure.
This will not replace any of the services we are currently having with, that we have with Health First, such as the dental programs and some of our elementary, so this will just be a major step in, in the other direction with the clinic.
I had a motion, a second, Deb. Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item is 11.6, a discussion and vote to approve request for 1.1 million for the field facade at the Durfee High School is presented by Ken Pacheco.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any, Mr. Pacheco?
So, just a little back history on, on what this request represents. The field house as a whole, in the, in the whole construction project, was a renovation. It was an interior renovation, had a small addition on the front of the main entrance. As they started working on this building, one of the issues they came across was that none of the openings in the building had lentils, the support beam that holds the structure above the door. So, as they changed doors, the walls started to collapse. There was no structure to hold it in place. That happened once, and after that, they had to rebuild each and every opening, interior and exterior. Because they had to remove so many panels on the exterior of this building, there was some breakage. Panels couldn't be put back, there was no way to reattach these asbestos panels, the ACM. Their, the name of the panel is transit, the material, but it is asbestos slaced. So, with that, they couldn't put asbestos back up, and they couldn't find any material that would mount the same way that the asbestos was mounted. For lack of a better term, there was nothing in back of the asbestos panel. There's no insulation. It was secured to I-beams at such long distances that there's no product made that would allow them to do, make this reattachment. So, the original plan of just painting the exterior of the field house, which was part of the construction project, we had to discard that plan and move forward with replacing the outside of the building, that I keep referring to as skin, the outside skin of that building, and with that became a complete reconstruction of those exterior walls, both with metal framing, insulation, waterproofing, and then the final application of a hardy panel, which is a solid material, manufactured material. So, part of the project, when we got to that part of the project, the estimates were put in at $2.5 million, and we were doing the building or, or replacing the outside of that building as we needed to. So, we started working around the pool area. We had to replace windows there, so most of that facade was taken down. We also had to do the addition portion. So, if you look at the building now, the entire east side facing building, the east side of the building is, is being replaced or has been replaced, and the northern face of that building has been replaced, and some of the western face of the building. There's about 1.1, 1.2 million dollars of building left to replace, and we are close, or we're getting dangerously close on our contingency funds to actually finish the rest of that. We have the money in the account, but that would leave us with no contingency to do the demolition of the current building, and also, if anything came up between now and the end, exterior, interior, any kind of site work, we wouldn't have those contingency funds to fall back on. So, this request to use one-time monies would, would allow us to keep the project stabilized as far as funding, allow the remaining contingency money to stay active, and we could use it if we needed to during the demolition process. The concern on the demolition is we don't know what's under the building. So, we know what it's, what's around the building, we know the asbestos panels have to be removed because they're ACM, but we, we don't know what was buried, and the concern is, is that if there is any hazardous waste, or if there is any unsuitable soils that have to be removed from the project, we won't have the funds to dispose of those, thus the contingency money. So, this request would be to finish that building with the same material that's finished on the, the north and east and part, partially on the west, and this will allow all of the hazardous material that's on the building to be removed, and it would complete the project.
All right, I got one quick question, Kenny. When they disconnect from the other building during the knockdown?
Yes.
Does this cover that end also, when they have to rebuild walls there?
So, that's in the project. So, that piece is built in the project because they were gonna do that anyway.
Right.
So, they, they're just gonna use the material that we've chosen, that hardy board. So, that part is not, it's being done, but it was already built into the project. The stuff that we, they weren't touching is the stuff that we're concerned with.
Okay, thanks. Any questions? Mr. Corey there, Mr. Agia?
So, my question is to you, Mr. Chair. Are we, are we cool budgetary-wise on this? Do we have to go to the city in any way, or can we do this on our own?
We do, we, we, I think we're anticipating funds. One-time monies, they're, I'm not quite sure what is left over from the last round of one-time monies, but the, the hope is there is funds. We do have a little bit of time. The project is, the, the exterior of this project right now is not a priority, but it will be in a matter of two months, and then we will step this up and have the companies who are dealing with the outside of that building make sure that the funds are, what is bid is still accurate.
It's one-time monies that are coming to us from the city, so this is not impacting our operating budget at all.
Any other questions? No, I'm sorry, Mr. Agia?
Yeah, so, this is before us now, and you give a pretty good argument to what happened. I can speak for myself. I haven't seen any numbers sent from the building committee or anything, so I, I don't know how much is in contingency, what was going in contingency. All I've heard along the way was we were hoping that we were gonna get the baseball field out of the contingency.
Yes.
At some point. Then that went aside, we had to go get the money from the, from the council. Then, like you're saying now, well, we have some money, but then it might be here, so, you know, quite honestly, I am not comfortable voting for this at the present time, because it sounds, seems like we could actually have money left over. So, I don't know if there's a mechanism to say we put this money, you know, if we need it, that we could use it, but what happens? We spend this money now out of the money that we control, and then two months from now, three months from now, the building gets knocked down. It, it sounds like you're not very confident, or you're very confident that they're gonna run out of money on the other end.
Well, I...
But I'm not putting words in your mouth, that's what I feel.
No, I, I, my feeling is simple, that I don't wanna interrupt the project while it's moving along in, at a certain pace. The construction or the demolition portion of this construction project is gonna be a year-long endeavor, so I don't wanna wait a whole year to remove, remove those panels from the building and tighten the building up. The problem with the panels, with us not removing the panels is, is the roofing system is not complete. So, in order to complete the roofing system, I need to replace the panels, put the wood, put the framing up, put the hardy panels back in place, and then I would do an edging off the roof, and that would finish the project. So, when you look at the front of the building, and you look at the back of the building, they're two different things, and, and the roof is not complete. So, my concern is, is that waiting a whole year with a roof that's not tight, I don't want any kind of damage done to the edging of the sonophil roof.
I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying.
So, so my concern is...
My only suggestion, you're saying that we, we're gonna need money over the next year. We're not knocking down that building next month.
The building's gonna start in September. The demo will start in September.
Right, so at that point, if we don't, if you have the money now?
Right.
If it's not totally drawn down, you could still, you could make the change to put that roof back on, what you just explained, now, and then come back to us in August when you figure out, okay, so we paid for that, now we're ready for the next phase, and show us the numbers to say how much is left and, and why. Like, I, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit, but...
Well, the only, and the, and the other piece is, as I said, we're gonna go back to the contractor, so if we wait two months, I gotta go back to the contractor, make sure he's still holding the price. If we go two months later, that could continue. I don't know what the escalation cost is gonna be for that contractor to hold that price. I also am concerned that, once that contractor leaves, so the contractor is the, the drywall company and the demo company, so I know the demo, the demo company's gonna be here, but the drywall company may not, which means a re-mobilization of a company to come in and do that work. I'm concerned that spending that money now and not being able to get that money in place in time to move the, the next phase of that project forward. And I understand what you're saying, that once we use our money, we're not gonna be able to get it back. I was hoping to come back here anyway for more money for the fields, so I would just say it would be a wash.
Well, my point is, but at that time, I'm saying, if we, we didn't have this money, you'd have to figure it out with the contractor, within the 263 million.
If we didn't have this money, we, I would be going to the city and asking them for money.
Or just, or just spending it right now and then coming back two months from now to get...
Yeah, I, the, the problem is, is that I can't, it's an MSBA project, so I can't spend our money and then say to them, we're out of money, because they're not gonna allow us to keep, they're not gonna let a contractor be on the hook for money for any, you know, MSBA is a 15, 45-day, 15, 45-day payment, so I need the money rather quickly, and that's my concern, that I won't have the money in place for this to happen. Until I authorize this extra work, I don't have any debt. The other work has already been authorized, the demo, so I need to lock it in place.
Yeah, and they have money, there's money for that?
Yeah, the money is, yeah, the money's secure for the entire demo.
What does that cost?
It's about, close to 10 million.
Right, so you have 10 million in the bank for that?
But that's tied up. I can't spend money that's already budgeted. You know what I'm saying? I can't take, the only fluid money in a project that I can move around is the contingency.
And you're basically saying we got zero.
I've got the, the contingency left from the construct, from the demo, that's part of the overall picture, and I've got maybe a half a million dollars of contingency.
Out of the 263 million?
Out of the 200, yeah, of, it's 217 is the construction portion of it, yeah.
So, we're basically out of money. That's my...
Everything is covered to the completion. If, if I don't find any junk under that, under that construction project, then I'm gonna have money left over on contingency.
And then that money will come back to the school committee so we can spend it?
Hopefully, on a field.
But not guaranteed. But that's gonna be money on the city side.
No, I, there's no guarantee.
So, that's out of our control, is my point.
Once it comes to us, it's out of your control. Yes.
I mean, I just, I wanna support the project, and I, I just, I feel like we haven't received the, the information that we need, as well as, I'm concerned that we're, we're basically out of money, and when we say we go back for the fields, that's gonna be a whole nother, this 1 million or this 500,000 that you're talking about isn't gonna, isn't gonna do what that picture showed.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
I mean, I'm sure you're gonna present that like in the next, I think there's an agenda item on it, but...
Yes.
That 500,000 is gonna be not much help for...
Next item.
You know what I mean? So, I'm just concerned about it, but I'm not gonna support it for that reason, but you gave a good explanation.
All right.
Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next, next is exactly what Kevin was talking about, a discussion and vote to approve the next step in the planning process of the Durfee Athletics Field is presented by Ken Pacheco. I have a motion, a second. I have a motion, a second. Mr. Pacheco?
So, as you see in the video, we traverse as the architect of record designer, and the, what we're looking to, to get approved is the conceptual design of what we're looking at. So, the overall project is not designed. All we did was provide the company with, with the dollars to obviously do the video, but there's a lot behind that video. Attached is a list of each, each individual field that, that's going to make up the entire complex, and it's, it's pretty specific as to what we're going to do, meaning large ticket items. For instance, as we know, I put the, the baseball field, complete renovations with lighting. That's already been approved, and we're ready to move on that, and we'll keep moving forward. The order at which this needs to be done so that we can stay in compliance with Title IX is we, we put a baseball field with lights, we need to put a softball field with lights. So, everything has to be equal all the way down the line, and as long as boys and girls have equal playing fields, then we are in compliance. They can't have a better surface, they can't have worse. Currently, you know, we're, we're, we're playing with lights on a, on a field that is being used as a multipurpose field. That'll continue, but if you look at the, at the, the next page, the varsity baseball field is already out of the picture because it's, it's gonna be done. We would move to the varsity softball field, football practice, and junior varsity soccer field, so number four would be the item that we would need to do next, and that will allow us to put a softball field on that particular piece. So, the order is gonna be important as to how we maneuver these because of the lighting and the, and the, all of the different pieces of the facility that are gonna try and keep everything equal between male and female. The football stadium, there's some minor drainage work to do. Obviously, the full field has to, the artificial turf has to be replaced. We're gonna do some track improvements. Most of our playing fields don't have flagpoles, so we're, we're adding flagpoles to all of the fields. The junior varsity softball field is gonna be a little different, it's gonna have a artificial surface on the inside, so the infield will be artificial surface, the outfield will stay turf, grass, and the reason for that is it's used for track and field, so throw in javelin, discus, we want it on a, on the, the artificial field, on the, yeah, on the natural field. Varsity soccer field, field hockey, lacrosse, is the brand-new field that's being built. So, the hope is, is right now that field is designed grass. It's a grass surface, it has all the drainage built in, but it doesn't have the curbing, and it doesn't have the artificial surface as part of it, and it also doesn't have the lighting. So, those would be upgrades to the current contract. So, my feeling would be, back to, to questions from Committee Managia, if there is 500,000 dollars left, then I would like to dump it into that field, put the artificial surface, put the lighting in, and that would just about come pretty close to finishing that field as an artificial turf field. The majority of it would be paid for out of the construction project, and we would be augmenting the, the dollars with, with our own. And then the tennis courts are part of the project, no, no cost to us extra on that. So, on the magnitude of dollars, we had talked about it with the city, to be somewhere in the vicinity of 6.7 million to do everything, and as we start getting finer on our design work with each field, we'll be getting more accurate dollar numbers. The market, the market is extremely volatile, so as we know, it's not as much about how the expense, it's about getting people to actually do the work. So baseball field, OPM, will be, design a selection, be, by the first week in July, we will go to design, hiring a designer right after that, and then we will look at, hopefully, mobilization of the construction company sometime in September, October. That field will be fully built, with the exception of the artificial turf, because we won't be able to beat the weather. Hopefully, a good spring will allow us to, to put the turf down and make the season, the new season on that, on that field for next year. And then we can immediately, while that's going on and during that process, we'll look at finishing up either the upper field or the practice field. The practice field needs some work, the football practice field, but that will be the softball field, and we would like to have that one in place in the, in the time span. I don't know if we're going to have all these fields, or we're gonna have the capability of funding all these fields by, by the 23, as we put on the slide deck and the video, but the hope is, is that we manage to get them done as quickly as we can to, to finish off the rest of that building. Everything else will be completed by then.
Mr. Agia?
Is this, the video that was done, was that done by our folks, or was it?
So our folks added the live stuff. So all of the design work stuff on there, the visuals, were all done by the landscape architect. And basically, we were just looking to see how they fit on, on the overall site, 66 acres and how we could slide everything in.
That's all we funded last-
Exactly.
So I would only ask that you submit something to us that shows us what that looks like?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a slide deck that'll come, that they're finishing up now.
Yeah, or some kind of, even on paper, I don't need to fancy. When you were mentioning the softball field needs lights for equality?
Right, it already does have it, if we put it on the, so the idea is the softball field is gonna be part of the practice field.
The one that's there now?
Yes. So the practice football field-
So you're not putting new lights, it's just that it'll be on?
It'll, the lights will be, so the lights will allow us to meet Title IX. As far as the boys have lights at the baseball field, the softball field would have lights. So those two sports would be equal at that point.
Yep. The, I don't see JV baseball on here. I know we have a finite area.
Right.
But as you know, there was currently two fields, and now there's only gonna be one.
So there's no, there's no room to fit that on this site, at the second field? The, the area where we're putting the softball field is not big enough. The original intent was that we were gonna try and, on the northern side of that softball field, we were gonna try and go into the woods a bit there, but it's, it's too wet, and we wouldn't be able to reclaim, you know, reclaim that property anywhere else on the site. So that's out of the question. I can't go to the southern side because there's a brook that runs there also. So we're locked in on that softball field. I don't have another base-
Which they've identified, so when you send us, we're gonna see that in a-
And you'll see that in the drawing, right. All of these, all of these lands are wet. So it, we turn the softball field around, so that instead of the backstop being up against the property line, the backstop is up against the parking lot, and that gives us the option.
Yeah, I understand, you're trying to put a jigsaw puzzle together.
Right.
I don't know if there's any options for the baseball field to do the same, that's where I was going with it. If we're putting a new baseball field from scratch, to put, I've been to fields where like the softball field plays on that corner, this way, not at the same time, and then the baseball field, so with a large area, you can usually get two fields. That's what I was gonna suggest, rather than putting up a whole new set of lights.
So some of the baseball, the outfield fence has to be moved in a touch, which will be good for our players, but it's gonna come in and the dimensions are gonna get a lot shorter on the outfield. So to put that second field in is gonna make it an issue.
Yeah, no, I hear you, and I'll wait to get the copies of it, I just, as it was here. But what are you looking for from the committee?
I'm looking for a committee to accept, yeah, I'm just looking for an approval to go to the next phase. To go to the next phase and accept the conceptual drawings, and then we will, we will get you a copy of, of the design work that's been done so far, and I need to-
Is that free? Is that free? Is there money attached to that?
No, there's no money attached to it now, because we can't move forward until I get approvals for each.
What I'm saying, what's the next phase gonna cost us?
So the next phase will be, again, design work on, on the practice field, which will come. So we'll get proposals on that.
So you're just gonna come back to us for more money when that's that time?
Right.
How about I yield?
Anything further, guys? Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ken, so obviously, left field's always been a problem on the varsity baseball field, and it's gonna be a shorter, oh, I'm sorry, it's gonna be a shorter porch, as they say.
Yes.
But we're confident-
We may go with a higher fence, though.
Okay, yep. And what we're confident, very confident about the drainage issue in left field after this.
Ducks will have a new room.
Yeah, great, thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Okay, let's vote, please, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Next is 11.9, discussion and vote to approve a prepay of special education tuition totaling 1.8 million, presented by Kevin Almeida.
So just as we did last year, where we prepaid 1.7 million dollars, I'd like to move forward with the payment of 1.8 million dollars for prepaid tuitions for next year's budget. It'll cover, working with this Fed Department, it will cover our expenses from July through September for everything that we know as of today.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the prepay of special tuition totaling 1,802,816,44 cents.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Agia?
What does that leave us with, the budget?
For, what's left over?
Yeah, so you're putting 1.8, I'm assuming that's the max?
That's, that's the max that I can put, because I can only cover three months' worth of expenses for Fed tuitions.
Outside of that, what is left over? Or is that, are you giving a report that's gonna say that same thing later?
I don't know, I have a report, I just have the report as of May is what I got for you.
Yeah, so maybe now is the right time to ask, I guess?
Yes.
So how much do we have?
We do have some money left over that I plan on spending before the end of the year, and I can't give you an exact number as of right now.
But with our budget, so our current budget, we're at least 1.8 million to the good.
Correct. I, I'd planned on the 1.8 million, you know, throughout the year. I just wanted to be sure that, you know, I always ask around this timeframe, you know, the committee, so the last, last year we asked around this time.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it. I'm trying to see on this, do you have a monthly budget report on the agenda?
Yes, it's the next item.
Okay, so I'll, I'll reserve my comments for then. I yield, thank you.
Anything further? Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion item 11.10 is a vote, discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report as presented by Kevin Almeida.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Agia.
The same question?
So there, there were, there is a balance, it's, I still have the balloon payroll that's still left, and I've still got a few payrolls that are still left, so I can't give you an exact balance, but there is a balance that'll be left over.
Yep. So if I'm looking at this, the circuit breaker revolving account, 2.8, that's, that's the carryover, like, that's gonna continue?
The, the 2.8 million is spent already in the circuit breaker fund. We will be carrying this year's revenue that we are, that we are receiving, which is about 2.5 million dollars, over to next year.
To start with, so we have a healthy start to next year?
Yes.
Similar to what's there?
Yes.
My concern is just it's the end of the year, and to make sure that we're on the same page with, what do we have to spend, and are we gonna have, and how are we gonna spend that money?
Yep.
Because the committee should be part of that process. I haven't heard yet, I know you said you're gonna spend the money, but we haven't seen anything on that. So just from my own standpoint. Now, you wrote student transportation, it won't be-
It's, so, so as we always do every year, we encumber the full contract, so that provides you with the balance of where we are as of, as of today. But we have not processed all of our bills yet, you know, through the end of the year, so those balances, some of that, some of, most of that money that's encumbered will be closed out after the payments are made in June.
Yep. So we got an email today from Tremblay Bus, I think you probably saw that?
I did.
Like everybody did. So it's, it's still indicating that we have a problem from last year. We have some problems from the current year. What's the plan to address that? Because we have the money now in student transportation. So what's the administration, the school administration's plan to address those issues?
As of, as of right now, I'm paying for services that are being provided to us.
So the administration doesn't have any thought to weigh in on prior year?
Yeah, it's obvious.
What's the, what's the city's feeling on it? I know we've talked about it before, we tried to get meetings, and so last year, there was companies that were owed money. We sat here at a public meeting where we were gonna debate whether it's 75% that they owe or zero. If you review the minutes of the meeting, every member of the committee basically said, we don't agree with the zero, but we don't agree with 75%. Now the money went to the city side, the vendors are still out money, and your feeling at the time was, let the state pay the money, or the feds? That hasn't come to fruition. So now what do we do? We have 4 million dollars in, in money that, and we know that they're out money. So to make the vendors whole, at least in part, to do the right thing, so I'm of the belief that we, as a committee, need to address this.
I, I, I believe it's the city's responsibility. The city's responsibility is honoring its contract with the company, and that's what we're gonna do. We've obviously had some litigation filed that's being handed by Corporation Council, and we'll let that play out.
So you feel it's your public opinion that we shouldn't make the, we shouldn't make any payments to the bus companies from last year, even though we know, we all know, because we all said it publicly, that they should have received something? So they're getting zero, and you think that's okay? As the mayor of the city, you think it's okay to not pay vendors that you know, and you've publicly stated in meetings here, that you don't think they should get zero? But you're now saying they should get zero?
No, I'm very comfortable paying people for the services they provide, and that's what we should do. And again, if there's questions on any litigation, they should file the proper paperwork, and I'm sure Corporation Council and their attorney can work it out.
We've tried to do that, and you're non-responsive.
Still are.
You and your attorneys are non-responsive to them.
That's not true. That is not-
But now my concern is, we have 4 million dollars, this committee, we gave the authority to have the transportation money go to the city at the end of the year. City took the money.
No, it's the city's money.
Yeah, so the city took it, and didn't spend, didn't pay the vendors. Now we get an email from the vendors that say, we currently owe them money, that they've documented to us that there are services that they gave, there's a percentage that they've put in there. Mr. Pacheco has had conversations with them, Attorney Assad's had to have conversations with them. They clearly are owed several hundred thousand dollars, and we have the money right now as a committee. Why are we not paying it?
Because it's the city's bill.
It's the school department bill right now.
Well, if they wanna make a motion and-
Can we get Mr. Pacheco to come to the, Mr. Pacheco, can you please come to the authority and weigh in?
It's mine, it's yours.
What's unbelievable, Mr. Corey?
This discussion.
You don't think that somebody should get paid?
For services rendered, absolutely.
Yeah, exactly. They had to be ready with us. Each member of this committee weighed in and said they were, they were supposed to be paid something, 10%, 20%, 38%. Now everybody's going silent, and this is ridiculous, which I don't understand where that comment's coming from, but the end of the, at the end of the day, the company is out money. They had to provide money. If Mr. Pacheco's being honest, he's gonna tell us, yeah, he thinks they should get paid something.
Right.
And why can't we pay him? We got 4 million dollars in transportation.
Yeah.
Mr. Pacheco?
Kevin.
Mr. Pacheco, can you please weigh in on whether you think we should be paid or not? They should be paid or not? Yes or no?
Kevin, that's inappropriate, buddy.
I've said it here two or three times, you know, what my opinion is on the whole thing. I deal with these people every day. At the end of the day, my opinion is not what, on this piece, is what's needed. I, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, as I've said many times here, you know, a contract is a contract is a contract, and-
And you don't think they should be paid?
I didn't say that.
Well, no, we're honoring the contract, Kevin. We are honoring our contract with the bus-
Right, and in the past, so I've already gone back and forth with you over this issue of whether, of whether they are going to, whether they need to sue you?
Kevin.
Mr. Superintendent, nobody's asking you your opinion.
I have gavel in, pending litigation.
Kevin, Kevin, there is litigation out there.
So, so my question is related to the current budget line that says student transportation has over 4 million dollars in it.
I believe that that money's going back to the city. Am I right?
That's money that's not spent, and it's under the purview of the school committee.
If, we don't spend it, yes.
But it's right now under the purview of the school committee, correct?
No. It's a non-net school spending eligibility cost. You're talking about pending litigation, which is totally inappropriate. I would advise that we shut this conversation down.
Yeah.
I would advise, if you wanna have dinner, then go outside, because there's no reason to be talking-
All right, guys, that's it. Listen, we're going way off the track here.
So my, my question is, in the current year, we have 4 million dollars. Why are we not helping these vendors that we, they are owed money? We still have current situations that we can take care of with these vendors that we haven't paid them for the current year.
Kevin, make a motion, get a second, do whatever you wanna do, but my point is, it's a city bill, we're responsible, we're gonna handle it, whatever happens, happens, period.
Right, and you, and you've said publicly-
No, you're talking in circles. Make a motion, get a vote, do what you have to do.
So when we look at the, so basically, every member of this committee that stated, when it came up, that says they're not in favor of giving the committee zero, the vendors zero, every member that stated that is now just backtracking on that?
Kevin, Kevin, make a motion. I know, but make a motion, get a vote, do whatever you wanna do, but all you're doing is talking.
I'm trying to bring out a point.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'm not, I've never been silent on this, and I don't even, I don't remember back then saying, for me, 0%. I, I think I said, services rendered for the work that they did. Now, we had other, we had other discussions about where the bus companies would purchase a vehicle, and that they're, you know, we might be liable for their, payment for their insurance on, on the vehicles. I think that was kind of discussion as well, but I've never, ever said that I wanted to pay anybody, this was during the pandemic, that they didn't get, they didn't pick up the kids at that time. On that piece, I said, no, services rendered, or you're not, and I think the last payment[1608.26] On that piece, I said, no, services rendered, or you're not, and I think the last payment was what, March?
All right.
That we provided to them?
The last year, yeah.
Those last years. So, that's where I, that's where I stand.
All right, and to Mr. Hart's point, you had mentioned that there was expenses that would come up, whether purchasing vehicles, keeping them on the road, and all that stuff. What I'm saying, suggesting is, you know what they got for that? Zero.
Kevin, make a motion.
They got zero.
Make a motion.
They got zero from the city, and the city just took the money, and this is going, the same thing's going to happen now. We've got 4 million dollars, and we're not taking care of.
Guys, 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 please.
I know, but I'm just saying, that was because we didn't get a, I think, a complete list from them.
Right.
As to what we, what we potentially could owe them.
Guys, let's get back on the.
That's all.
Mr. Agia, if you want to make a motion and get something done, do something, but let's just talking is, hold on, Kevin, just talking is doing nothing. If you have something you want to make a motion to try to get through.
I'm talking on this.
No, I understand, but you're talking in the budget report with city money. Talk about something that's in your.
Why is it on here, then? Why is it on here if it's city money?
Because it's coming back to us, because I know it is.
But why is it on our monthly budget?
Because it hasn't been come, come back yet.
If it's a city expense, all of a sudden now, we're trying to figure out, oh, this is a city expense. It, it, some days, it's convenient to talk about what, fighting for the school department and what's right for our vendors and the people that are taking care of our kids. In some days, it's not. The end of the day, I'm asking these gentlemen questions because I want to get their opinion on what's happening with this particular amount of money. It's 4 million dollars here.
But you're not getting anywhere.
And when we don't get the services from the people, they've been good to us, they've treated us fairly, they've treated us right, and you know what we're doing? We're screwing them. That's what's happening. We're private businesses, we're screwing the private business, not even negotiating with them at all. That's you and the city side and your attorneys.
Kevin, Kevin, please, watch your.
That's a fact.
All right. You got a motion? You're going to do anything or just talk? Okay. Anybody got anything else? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Point of information, what's the motion?
I thought it was, uh.
Do we have one?
That could be a good.
Discussion and vote to approve the budget.
It was. Mr. Harp made the motion, it was a vote to.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure he had a motion, I missed that. That's all, because we could be just taking a vote and.
Go ahead, Deb.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. So, we have a number of items for your information.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Retirements, appointments, resignations. I have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Anything to come before the committee and for new business? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, I've requested on several occasions between meetings that we needed to put an agenda item on the agenda, and unfortunately, it wasn't completed, it wasn't put on the agenda. But following school committee policy, I'd like to make a motion that we utilize Section 9, the early termination payment equal to three months' base salary for the superintendent, termination without cause.
Motion's out of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, that motion is out of order. It's going to be addressed in executive session.
Why is it out of order?
It's not an open session matter.
It's under new business.
It's not an open session matter, it's an executive session matter. You want to ask legal counsel, but.
Mr. Assad? Mr. Assad?
Could you repeat the?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
We can't hear you.
I didn't hear you, Kevin, but I'll give it to you again.
Sorry, I apologize. I had mentioned earlier that I had requested several times to the chairman that I'd like to have an item placed on the agenda. That item is to utilize clause number nine in the superintendent's contract, termination without cause, which would allow for the early termination payment equal to three months of his base salary, termination without cause. That was what I requested to be on the agenda, and that's what my motion is, and I'm following the policy of the school committee that says if it's not on the agenda, and it's an urgent matter, that we could bring it up on the new business. That's simply the reason why I'm bringing it up now.
It's a motion?
I made a motion.
I'll second it.
First of all, with respect to the policy of the, of the school committee, it mentions about, if notice is given within five days, at least five days, to the chair, vice chair, and the superintendent, to have a matter that goes on the agenda, and it's not placed on the agenda, then what happens is that any committee member would be able to request that the topic be placed on the agenda for the next regular school committee meeting. If, in fact, it was, it's a matter that had to be heard prior to the next scheduled meeting for whatever reason, and I, and I believe when this was originally adopted, it was a concern about if there was a deadline, when something had to be done, otherwise there would be a problem for the school district, then that matter could be brought up as a topic on the new business and for discussion and vote. The motion, the projected motion that Mr. Agia has mentioned is not something that would fall under the Second Avenue. It would be a situation where you can move to the, that the committee place it on the next agenda, but it would not be a situation where you'd be discussing this matter in open session at this time. If there's a motion to place a matter on the agenda, that can take place, but there would be no discussion or vote on, on the merits of that particular motion.
So, I'd like to make my motion to be, to read exactly as Attorney Assad said, that it be placed on the next agenda item, the next agenda for the meetings.
All right, do I have a second? I have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
No. No, no discussion, there's going to be a vote, just a vote.
Just vote, go ahead. Ms., Deb?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
No.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
No.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Larrabee?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
Anything further? We have a request for executive session?
Yes, there is a need for an executive session, yes.
Could you?
Motion to enter executive session.
I have a motion, a second?